And that's the opportunity for anybody to speak about anything that they wish to speak about. If you have any comments on our special session item, on the submission of the grant application, please hold your comments for that item. We'll take comments then. Otherwise, anything either on our work session or not on our agenda, and please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. And I think Mr. Lovelace in the back is going to go first.
Chris, my name is Pat. Please, thank you. Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace. Your official peace delegate? And I want to thank everybody for the past few weeks for showing up at the meetings and speaking during the public comment. Because I love it when they have public participation, and public concern and care for our city and I whirl around them. And that's one thing we've got to do. We've got to get more activists in this world. Young Activist Club are doing really good here in Tacoma Park, and I'd like to see that expand really, really larger. But they need more adult volunteers, if they can get them. And I'd like to know where they can get them. I think we should check around the different schools and leave notices in the library and stuff, and also on the internet, and also in the newspaper. Put an ad in the newspaper for the Young Activist Clubs. They need adult, some adult volunteers. And also, I'd like to let you know about, on President's Day weekend, we're having a demonstration against the Keystone Pipeline, which is also called the Tar sands Pipeline, because it's going to be bringing tar sands down from Canada to the Gulf of Mexico, cutting right through the breadbasket of America. And we cannot allow that to happen. We just simply cannot allow that to happen. And I'd like to see people in Tacoma Park getting up and speaking about it, because what is an issue in this country is usually an issue in Tacoma Park. You know, because we're all in this country and this world together. We've all got to try to do what we can to make it better. And I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to see what we can do to continue getting public participation in these meetings, and that would be great. And also, I'm wondering when the ward nights are going to start up, because that would be a great time to put out voter registration kits. Because if we get one registered voter out of that, that's worth it. Because we've got, I'm sure more people turned 18 in this city since last election day. And I'd like to see everybody get up there and register to vote who are not registered yet, and take part in your basic American right, your sacred right to get up and vote. So please, everybody who is not registered, think about it. Think about it like your ass depends on it, because it does. You know, what happens in the White House eventually happens in your house. So I'd like to see more public participation in these meetings and other places. Because if you get up and speak for your three minutes, remember, those three minutes could be the most important three minutes of your life, your city's life, and your country's life, and your children's life. So please, get up and speak and take part in this city. Let's make it the great activist city that it was twenty and thirty years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
Let's get up and do it. Thank you very much.
Somebody else. They're going to wait.
Good evening. My name is Ray Nosbaum, and I'm the owner of Marva Harvest Incorporated, which is a community benefits corporation that was incorporated in June of 2012. Community benefits corporations are also known as B corporations. For 28 years, until 2007, I was a resident of Tacoma Park. Tonight, I want to ask the City Council to address how any community benefits corporation that is providing food products will be covered under city code, possibly Chapter 8.12, which is on your agenda for tonight. Marva Harvest's community purpose includes providing locally and sustainably grown food to households of all income, particularly low and moderate income households. And that is why Marva Harvest approached the Community Preservation and Community Development Corporation, CPDC, whose mission is to maintain low and moderate income housing, to establish a weekly market at the Essex House, which is at 7777 Maple Avenue. The market would provide locally grown food to the residents, as well as the neighboring public and the buildings around that building. But before Marva Harvest and CPDC can proceed, we need to have some things addressed. And the first is, is the proposed weekly market covered by the recommended changes to the city code related to food vendor trucks? Or is the market covered by rules that apply to the Sunday farmer's market, or the crossroads market that takes place on Wednesdays? Second, if the recommended code for food vendor trucks relates to the Marva Harvest food produce market, is it possible that the same waiver that allows the food vendors to operate could apply to Marva Harvest and CPDC so we could proceed to have a written agreement and begin work on the market? Third, how would the new code recommendations cover an agreement between a private property owner like CPDC and Marva Harvest? And then fourth, and finally, would the City Council be willing to eliminate the cost of the vendor's permit for the community benefits corporations selling food like fresh produce? Because there is a cost to community benefit corporations to provide community benefit and return profit to the community. We will also be, Marva Harvest will also be operating in Montgomery County outside of Tacoma Park. We have obtained an agricultural producer certificate from the Agricultural Services Division to be able to sell locally grown food in the rest of the county, and to obtain site-specific vendors at a reduced rate. So I extend special thanks to Mr. Siemens for advice that he's given me, and Ms. Rosalyn Grigsby for her guidance, as I've been striving to start up the weekly produce market. If you have any questions, please contact me. And I know I'm late, but I have a one pager that can be distributed, and has my contact information.
Mr. Nosbaum, could you give us a feel of your timing? Because I know that you're looking for these answers, but I also know that you're trying to open this market in the near term.
Right. We had been trying to target mid-March. Now, obviously, if we can't open in mid-March, we can't. But the program staff at CPDC and Marva Harvest have been targeting mid-March as the start of the markets, if it is possible.
Okay, great. And I don't know if you're going to be here for the discussion tonight.
I will stay for the duration. Thank you.
So where would the market be located? Would it be in the parking lot?
Yes, except for if there's really bad weather. I'm in discussion with the program staff about moving inside. But if I did that, then I would only be serving the residents inside.
And how many stalls would there be?
It would be two canopies with four tables. It would just be Marva Harvest. It's not a number of vendors, it's one vendor. And we've worked very hard to keep the costs down so that we can make sure that the produce is affordable. And based on research I did in November, based on the prices that would be charged by my supplying farmer, and then my corporate costs, I feel the prices would be very competitive compared to the ethnic grocery stores, the commercial grocery stores, and other stores that provide local and organic food.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for some very interesting questions, and we look forward to seeing what the answers are.
Right. As soon as you can do it. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Emily from the Young Activist Club. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. The Young Activist Club is working on getting polystyrene out of our community. Polystyrene is bad for our health, and we shouldn't be using it in our food and drinks. It is made from styrene, a known neurotoxin, and reasonably anticipated human carcinogen. It goes to the incinerator and gets burned and hurts the environment. Polystyrene is in Styrofoam, but it is in all number six resin code plastics. We have bookmarks that give information about polystyrene, so I think that Elise is going to pass them out. Okay. The city passed a resolution in 2010 that banned the use of city funds to buy polystyrene. We would like to thank you for passing that resolution.
Thank you.
I'm Margot, and I'm in seventh grade at Tacoma Park Middle School, and I'm also a part of the Young Activist Club. As you may know, we have many projects going on. There are two main projects right now. The first is our pilot project to get a dishwasher instead of our polystyrene trays at Piney Branch Elementary School. Unfortunately, Superintendent Starr and the Board of Education won't support us, even though we've raised over $10,000. Our other main project is our business campaign. More than two dozen businesses have signed our pledge to go polystyrene free, including this building.
Good evening. I'm Elise McCall. Thank you for the chance to testify. We have a few requests. We would like you to better implant the current resolution. Also, we would like you to ban polystyrene at festivals such as the Folk Festival and the Street Festival. We would like you to ban polystyrene food surface wear citywide. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a few other requests, including, we would love it if you could talk to Dr. Starr and Representative Barclay on the school board and ask them to meet with us. Also, if you could talk to the county and state level elected officials, that would also be very good. And this year, if you could make legislation regarding anti-polystyrene, that would, we would be happy, we would be very happy if you could do that. And also, we have another new request. It's slightly different. It's regarding the use of plastic straws and water glasses. We'd like if you could consider having drinking straws not be given to customers unless they request it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emma McInnes from Piney Branch Elementary School, and I would like to say that we will continue to do this project and also raise awareness about polystyrene, and why it's bad by giving out the bookmarks as you have, and trying to get businesses to sign the polystyrene free pledge. Thank you for meeting with us.
Thank you all very much. Do you have some extra bookmarks you can leave with us to make sure that we can have some to hand out to people? And it's interesting to hear your, some of the older requests, but also some of the new ones. And I think we can try and do something on some of those. I've jotted them down, and we'll try and make sure that we can do some things. Do we know whether anybody has heard back from Delegate Hubbard? I will check on that when I'm in Annapolis. You haven't heard back from Delegate Hubbard? Okay. I will check on that and get back to you this week. Thank you all very much.
Can we ask a quick question?
Oh, quick.
Which of the restaurants in Tacoma Park have you gotten to sign your pledge, and they're no longer using the polystyrene containers? I got to tell you that from the time you all met with us some weeks ago, I had no idea that a triangle six was bad stuff, not a clue. And now, I'm, you know, spreading the word as often as possible, because it looks like it's good stuff, because it's got a triangle around it. So I really appreciate your bringing that to our attention, so we can continue to bring it to other peoples. But which restaurants in Tacoma Park?
I have a list.
Do you have a list?
Yeah, the list is on our website.
If you can come to the microphone and just tell us the numbers, the numbers in the list, and tell people what the website is.
So everybody in Montgomery County hears.
Right.
Okay. The, I think there's about 25 businesses that we got to sign the pledge, and the list is on our website, which is www.youngactivistclub.org.
YoungActivistClub.org. Good.
One comment while you're up there, Emily. You might also reach out to the food trucks.
Yes, actually, I think we've thought about that.
Which are still using Styrofoam or polystyrene.
Some of them are.
And also, they're on the bottom of the bookmarks, so.
Oh, the email, the website. Okay. Thanks.
On the bottom of the bookmark.
Yes. Silly me.
Did you have a question?
Just a comment. Just want to say that, thank you. I take this, what you're saying to us, very seriously. I want to see these things happen to the extent they can. And I'm very disappointed that the new superintendent of Montgomery Schools, Mr. Starr, seems to have decided to take the same stance as his predecessor. I'd hope for better.
Kind of seems absurd that he wouldn't at least sit down at the table and talk about it.
Yes. Thank you.
To foreshadow something that's on the agenda for later, one of the staff recommendations regarding food vendors is reduce permit fees, and perhaps that could be conditioned on non-use of polystyrene.
Thank you all. Is there other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will move along to council comments.
You guys always wait for me. Your breaths.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank the Young Activists for, one more time, opening our eyes up to how we can assist the world in cleaner living and a sustainable society. Really appreciate, I appreciate your stand. I appreciate you haven't given up. I appreciate that, I don't think you're going to give up ever, and that's a good, that's a good thing. Thank you. All right. That was one extemporaneous thing. Oh, my goodness. And so I have another one. I usually like to come prepared with everything written down. It's always easier and better. I don't talk so much. But your newsletter, Tacoma Park Newsletter, arrived, again, it didn't arrive in my mailbox today, but it probably arrived in everyone else's. I just didn't get a chance to look at my mail. It arrived in my councilperson mailbox today sometime. And again, everything you need to know about what's happening in Tacoma Park is in, is in the newsletter. A couple of things I want to point out to everyone. There's a list, and I'm going to talk a little bit in my prepared remarks about people being involved in Tacoma Park. But inside the front page, under the fold, there's a list of committees that are still looking for participants. And all of you all that are out there listening, if you want to give back to Tacoma Park, this is a very special way to do it. Take a look at the list, see if there's anything that toots your whistle, and get on a committee, and that will get you started in all kinds of wonderful avenues. The other, I just did this real quickly as I saw it. The other exciting article is Tacoma Park VFW Post Opens Doors to All. This is a post in Ward Three, Post 350, and they have kind of mumbled about opening their doors to everybody, and it looks like they're taking it to the streets. So read this article, and it's a pretty sweet place to go if you want to get a hot dog or have a drink, or, you know, rent it for a barbecue or a playdate. So read the article. It's been there for a very, very long time. It's part of the ANX section of Tacoma Park from Prince George's County. Thank you for that. Now, a quick, oh, I know, Page Five, Page Five. I took a note. Page Five, right down at the bottom of Page Five, there's a teeny little quip about Tacoma Park plays. And a quick moment and huge gold stars about the mid-winter playdate, this Thursday, that is this Thursday, February the 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., right here in our very special community center. Yikes! A center for the community. There will be big people, little people, all kinds of people everywhere, playing games, or singing, or dressing up like a princess, or any other kind of outfit. So much positive energy everywhere. There'll be yoga, bluegrass music, and a huge chess game, and face painting, plus some real fun with balloons. Kids, four walls and two dozen helium balloons. It doesn't get better than that. Maybe a moment for the adults to play as well. Maybe I'll let the adults play. I'm not sure yet. Huge gold stars to Pat Rombach for being a class act and bringing high quality of fun into our lives. She always runs a fabulous program, including lots of volunteers and citizens, tall and small, participating. And this year, I think probably, in the same way as last year, has partnered up with the Recreation Department and the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. It's always great to see almost all the spaces being used by so many children, adults, and seniors, a super cross-generational and diverse population. I'm thanking her again for having a wonderful mid-winter playdate and always reminding us to have a playful day. Pat Rombach is my kind of leader. Speaking of leaders, gold stars, you know, this is Terry's second gold star of the night, I think. Gold stars to Terry Joy Siemens for donating 25 pool passes to the first 25 folks who come through the doors. I mean, he's just too much. And this is a little bit about giving back to your community. When I decided to run for the City Council, one of my goals was to have more participation from the residents of our fair city and their own government. This is not something that happens everywhere. The opportunity to give back to your community, that people are not only listened to, but action is taken on their behalf within the government. There seems to be more and more citywide participation in all things that affect you. Gold stars to all of the residents who have responded to the council's request on what to do with the 1.4 million that was not allocated in 2012, 2013. We are now discussing a very long list that includes your priorities, what you prioritized for the money. And just quick honorable mention, I know this is off Tacoma Park, but kind of like on the city and on this section of the country. Congratulations to Robert Griffin III for being made Rookie of the Year. He's a Redskins rookie player. And huge congratulations, yay, to the Ravens for bringing the Super Bowl trophy back to our, at least to our region. I know it was on the East Coast last year up in New York, but now it's down here, it's only 30 miles away. It was a great game and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Speaking of the Ravens, I'm a native of Baltimore, so what transpired in New Orleans, New Orleans last night had deep, deep meaning for me, and I'm very, I couldn't not let this moment go by without acknowledging this for the record. Anyway, I'm trying to be very calm as I say these words, but inside, I am just boiling over with excitement and exuberance. Take my word for it. The primary matter of concern to residents in my ward, staff is truly aware of, so I mention it not for staff's benefit, but because they're working hard on this question, is the pending reconstruction of the bridge that crosses New Hampshire Avenue at the intersection of Sligo Creek Parkway and New Hampshire Avenue. And it's been a little frustrating trying to get the State Highway Administration to understand our reasons for being a little anxious about what that construction is going to mean for the community that uses Sligo Creek Parkway. But more importantly than that is just really the environmental impact while the construction's going on in terms of noise, and light, and the timing of the whole project, and the hypothetical possibility of cut through traffic through New Hampshire Gardens and other parts of the city that'll get impacted, possibly impacted. Communications with us, State Highway Administration, have perhaps been not as what I hoped for. We're still trying to set up a community meeting that we're told that the State Highway Administration wants to have with the community. But as of this moment, I haven't not heard exactly what their plans are. But we do know that the construction that was supposed to have started today has been postponed. And you may say, well, until when? And that's the question we have. So we just, there's more questions, and more questions, and not enough answers. So I just want folks who are listening to this to understand that this is my top priority, and staff has been very, very helpful, city staff, in trying to help us, you know, get coordinated with the State Highway Administration, so that while we know that the bridge needs to be repaired and it needs to be done, if there's any question about that, there's just a lot of questions we have about the process that we just don't have answers to. So thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. With apologies to my colleague, Ms. Daniels Cohen, I wanted to give a gold star tonight. We have a, I have a constituent who does food programs frequently in the city, and she deserves special mention today, just because of the extra work and the physical nature of the work that she put in today, hefting three dozen 50-pound sacks of potatoes to help the neighborhood and to help feed those who are less fortunate. And so I, she wants to remain nameless, but I would like to give a gold star to this hard-working constituent. Thank you.
I've got a couple of quick items. A reminder that two weeks from tonight, Monday, February 18th, which is the President's Day holiday, District 20, our District 20 delegation in Annapolis is having their annual District 20 Night. And for those people who want to go and talk with their delegates or senator, that is from 6:00 to 8:00 in Room 170 in the House Office Building. And I imagine that a number of us from the council will be going. I know I'll be going. And it's always a good time to meet with our delegates and senator. And if you are going, it's a good idea to let them know so they have the right numbers for food that they're supplying. And I think it's, oh, there's an email address. If anybody wants to know where RSVP, I can come up with the email address to RSVP, too. I think it's aid@, aid@delegatehixon, I'm not sure. It's aid@something. Anyway, that's two weeks from tonight, Monday, the 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Annapolis. And just to let folks know that last week, I did meet with the Speaker of the House, had a meeting with him, talking about the municipal highway user revenue monies that are in the governor's budget, trying to make sure that those stay in the budget as it goes through the legislature. And he had an opinion that things were going to move fairly well, and he hadn't heard too much about trying to remove that from the budget. And that means many hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city's budget for next year. And I also provided a briefing to the Ways and Means Committee last Wednesday on both highway user on both highway user revenues and electronic notice bills, and those are the two MML priorities for this year. The electronic notice bill would make it so that municipalities and counties around the state could, instead of publishing in a newspaper of general record, which we're required to do for certain hearings, would make it so that a smaller notice would go in those newspapers saying that people could find the full text of whatever was necessary on the city's website, and if people didn't want to go to the website to check it, that they could request to be put on a list, and they would have a full copy mailed to them through the postal service. So, that's an initiative that has been worked on a number of years, and we're working on it again this year. It's an effort to save money and make sure people can see that information, since most people, I don't think, look at the public notice section in the papers of record. And I don't see any other council comments, so we'll move along to the city manager's comments.
I just have two brief things. I did put at your place the quarterly financial report and staff report. It's, it will be put on the website along with the last one, which hasn't found the website yet, but I'll have those available for you. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and Kay, you didn't mention it, was that there will be a meeting about the Sligo Mill Overlook Park kind of planning process, community garden, what will happen to get a playground on the site, and how the, I guess, some of the options that people can discuss. On next Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, February 12th, at 7:30 p.m. at 6411 Orchard Avenue.
I was going to mention it next week.
Oh, wow. This way, they can get it on their calendars earlier, and then you can remind them.
Absolutely. That's why, that's why.
You're doing what you do.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. We will move along to, yes?
Sorry, one question. The 410 agreement was going to go up on the website. Has that happened?
No, well, yes, it has. It's been up there.
Thank you.
The legislation is not ready yet.
Thank you.
We'll move along to legislative update.
I think you know more than I at this point.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of things. I just want to go over a couple of the bills that the Maryland Municipal League has taken a position on, and that was at our meeting last week. We have another, whole nother set of bills. I think last week, we considered 26 bills. I don't know how many we're going to consider this week because we still haven't gotten them all yet. One that is of interest to us is SB 72, which is damage to highways from oversized vehicles and liability. And we took a position to support with amendment because we want to make sure that we would add municipalities to the state and the county designation for receiving damages from oversized vehicles. The proposed legislation only includes damages to the state and the county. So, if there's going to be any damage to our streets, we want to make sure that we get reimbursed for oversized vehicle damage. Another one is Senate Bill 144, which is change in the property tax credit. We took a position of support, and that would be to change the minimum tax credit we can offer in certain instances from 10% to 25%. SB 210, elected officials' liability for costs, we took a position of support with amendment, and this would force officials to reimburse costs for legal defenses if they violated any law or consent to a settlement agreement. And what we felt was that there needs to be some tinkering with the settlement agreement because depending on how settlement agreements work, that can just have a different effect on whether somebody is in a position to reimburse for legal costs. And then there were four bills that we opposed. Senate Bill 251, which is, would change the personal property tax depreciation. The city receives personal property taxes from businesses, and those are on things like inventory and equipment. And this would change it so that the depreciated value, starting in year 11, would be zero, even if things continued to have value. It probably, in most cases, is about a 10% value until the item is either disposed of or written off. So, it's an attempt to say that after 10 years, nothing has any value. So, that would impact our tax receipts. SB 289 talks about water pollution control penalties, and it increases penalties to $10,000 per violation, even for a minor act, so that if the city did something that, or an entity did something that increased water pollution, there could be the potential for, even if it was just something very minor or not intended, could be a $10,000 per violation penalty. HB 160 is an interesting one. It's a continuing attempt to change where bicycles, play vehicles, and unicycles are allowed to be ridden on sidewalks. State law currently says that you cannot do that unless the local jurisdiction says that you can. This is to change it so that instead of being opt-in, it would be opt-out, and would say that automatically, people can ride all of those vehicles on all sidewalks in the state unless a municipality or a county chooses to designate places where you cannot. So, we took a position to oppose, saying we think it works pretty well the way it is. It's different in more rural areas or more urban areas, and it can even be different in areas where it's maybe more close in suburbs like us, where we have a lot of sidewalks, but there are some sidewalks that are very narrow and on busy streets, and a lot of pedestrians, and other things going on on the sidewalks, that it would be easier to start from the position that we're in now, where it's banned unless we say it's approved. And I'm not sure what our code says about riding bicycles, unicycles, or play vehicles on the sidewalk. Everybody always wanted to, the comments tend to be that they want to see the unicycles.
And play basketball in the street?
True.
Yeah, I've actually put out some inquiries to find out a little bit about, you know, what we think about that, or what their provisions are. I don't know it.
And the final one that we opposed was HB 188, which is the generator tax credit, and this would mandate a tax credit of $7,000 for any gas station that installs or installs the capability to install backup generator power. So, it's like, it would be a good thing for them to do so that they can pump gas when there's a, when there's a power outage, but mandating that we give them a $7,000 tax credit for doing so, we felt wasn't such a good idea. So, that's some of the legislation that has potential municipal impact that was filed two weeks ago. We'll see what was filed last week.
We also are preparing our standard testimony on behalf of community legacy and similar programs that give us funds, economic development-related funds. So, that's something that's in preparation.
And that bicycle, play vehicle, and unicycle on sidewalks bill has its public hearing tomorrow.
Oh, well.
Any questions or other items that anybody wants to bring up on legislative? Okay, seeing none? We will move to our presentation. And this is a presentation from, for the council, from the council, that doesn't look right.
Center for.
It's the Center for Watershed Protection, report on Maple Avenue Outfall Pollution Source Tracking. Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thanks a lot for having me tonight, and thank you to Tim Mail, who engaged us in this project. We received a small grant from the city approximately six months ago to complete a project that we had already started to look for pollution sources in Sligo Creek, and ran out of funding to do that, and the funding from the city allowed us to continue that work. And I just wanted to update you all on what we had done and what we had found, and where we left off. So, next slide. Our group, the Center for Watershed Protection, is a national nonprofit. We're based out of Elocat City, Maryland. We primarily provide technical assistance and guidance to local governments and watershed groups to help improve watershed conditions. Our main bread and butter is in stormwater management and watershed planning. We provide guidance to state and federal and local governments on how they can best implement the regulations as far as clean water goals are concerned. Next slide. Mostly what I'm going to be talking to you tonight about is illicit discharges. And what these are, are discharges to the municipal separate storm sewer system that are not composed entirely of stormwater. We know of stormwater and its impacts and effects and the pollution that's carried from stormwater. These are basically point sources of pollution. They're dry weather sources of pollution, and there's a process for going out and looking in a watershed to figure out where these are coming from. These are regulated under Phase 1 and Phase 2 MS4 permits, of which the city has a Phase 2 permit. Next slide. Under the Phase 2 MS4 permit, the city or the regulated body is required to do a certain number of things to meet the minimum measures for the illicit discharge detection and elimination control measure. Need to develop a storm sewer system map, have some kind of ordinance to prohibit illicit discharges, have a plan in place to find and fix them. There needs to be education to the public regarding illicit discharges, and there needs to be some program goals associated with implementing the program. In 2004, our organization developed a manual to help Phase 2 governments implement this program. And that's a picture that you see on the slide there, and that is a guidance manual intended to walk a community through the process for developing this program and then implementing it. Next slide. What we've found at the center with our research is that a lot of the illicit discharges are associated with sewage sources. There is a lot of mixing between the sanitary systems and the storm drain systems. What we've been most focused on lately is quantifying that impact, which has not been done in the past. A lot of our former work had been done in the city of Baltimore, and the research that we've done there showed that the city has spent millions of dollars on addressing wet weather sanitary sewer overflows, but that these have had little effect on the overall dry weather water quality because of these illicit discharges, which might be small leaks that are cumulatively having a big impact. Another study, again, in Baltimore showed that sewage was the predominant source of nitrogen in the watershed even after repairs to the wastewater system were completed. We feel that Chesapeake Bay communities are generally not addressing illicit discharges the way that they need to be and as comprehensively as they need to be. And we have therefore been going to MDE, to EPA Region 3, to EPA Headquarters, to educate them about this problem, because we have just now begun to bring in some of these numbers that are saying that this is a really significant issue. Next slide. So, some of the, a little bit of background is that in 2010, just going to walk you through a little bit of the funding sources and kind of primary things we've been working on lately. We initiated some of this work in Baltimore, where we were trying to document, quantify the pollution load associated with these illicit discharge charges, particularly sewage discharges. Next. Then we found that it was a really big problem. So, what we wanted to do next is then say, "Well, it's a problem in Baltimore. We know Baltimore is really old. It's leaky. Is it a problem in other areas, too?" In 2011, we received a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to look in other communities and say, "Is this a big problem in those areas as well?" We looked at a couple of communities on the eastern shore of Maryland, and we also looked in Sligo Creek. Through that project, we walked all of the stream miles in Sligo Creek and Montgomery County portion, went to every single outfall, collected water samples, and then documented what we thought was a potential pollution load contribution from the illicit sewage discharges. And again, it was shown to be very significant. Next. Through that project with, that we did in cooperation with Montgomery County DEP, we went to all the different outfalls. Two really large ones that we didn't get to because we knew that they were going to be very complicated, and we knew that there were problems associated with them, were the Bennington Outfall, which drains from downtown Silver Spring, and the Maple Avenue Outfall, which drains from here in Tacoma Park.
All right. Would you define outfall, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a storm sewer pipe. It's where all the pipes exit from the underground storm drain system into the stream. So, these Maple Avenue outfalls are down Maple Avenue towards the hospital. They're two really big pipes, two 72-inch pipes. Lots of pollution coming from these outfalls. Our, the next source of funding was to kind of take these two drainages that we knew had a lot of problems, and we wanted to say, "Okay, can we figure out where all the pollution sources are coming from and get them eliminated?" A cradle-to-grave approach for these pollution problems. We ended up on that, with that funding. We spent a lot of time in the Bennington Avenue outfall drainage because there was a lot of activism and community people that were interested, and so we were engaging in them. We came to Maple Avenue and did some of the work here, and then ran out of funding, and that's where you guys helped us out. Next. So, that's where we are. We did a little bit more work on figuring out where the pollution problems were coming from, and this drainage here draining from Tacoma Park, but we didn't get all the way there. Next. So, these pollution sources, they're small, these can be small inputs, but they have a really big, because they're usually sewage, they have a lot of nitrogen, they have a lot of phosphorus, they have a lot of bacteria. Even just a small flow, over time, over a year's time, that small flow really adds up. For example, one of the ones that we found in Baltimore, if you were to treat that same amount of pollution coming from one small illicit discharge with some of these new green infrastructure, LID practices, low-impact development practices, you would need to build 140 bio-retention facilities. A bio-retention's like a big rain garden, at a cost of over $1.7 million. We know that the Chesapeake Bay is severely impacted by stormwater, and we know that, you know, our organization has built itself on addressing stormwater issues. However, these non-stormwater problems are low-hanging fruit. We need to get particularly these sewage issues under control before we start spending all these millions and millions of dollars on these low-impact development solutions. Another illicit discharge that we found on the eastern shore of Maryland, had a nitrogen load of 1,900 pounds, which is very big, and was contributing 68.3 million gallons per year of polluted water. Next slide. So, this manhole that you see here, and there's a small trickle of flow that you can see looking down in that manhole. This is the one that I'm talking about. It's just a small amount of flow. Consistently, every time we went out there, it was the same amount coming out. That adds up. Over a year's time, that's 68 million gallons per year. Next. I just did a quick Google search of 68 million gallons, and this is what I came up with. The amount of daily water usage by Spokane, Washington residents in 1965. Next. The amount of oil spilled into the English Channel in 1978, wiping out whole species and communities of marine animals along hundreds of miles of coast. Next. The amount of biofuel that can be produced from the 30 million annually discarded Christmas trees. So, my point just being that, again, it's, they're small flows. You would look at them, and you wouldn't think that they would be a problem, but as they continue, and their cumulative impact is really significant. Next. The work that we did in Sligo Creek, again, pointed to this fact that the pollution that we're seeing from these potentially sewage discharges is, it equals almost all of the pollution that we're seeing in the stream totally, from the work that we did. The county is still working to follow up on some of these issues, and they've, because of our project, they are now devoting more resources, more funding, and looking at getting more staff people to help address this problem. Because, and they are unlike many, you know, municipalities, counties that are not really paying attention to this. As far as the Clean Water Act goes and the MS4 permits, it's kind of been a check-the-box up to now. You do this, you go out, you look at your outfalls, they look okay, check, you move on. But really, we could be using this tool a lot more effectively. Next. We also saw tremendous amount of bacteria coming from these polluted outfalls. And, you know, this is obviously a public health concern, so we really need to start paying paying more attention. Next. So, this is a map showing the Sligo Creek drainage in yellow, only down to the PG line. And then in green is the Maple Avenue drainage area. So, in that green blob that you see on your map, which includes where we are right now, all of that land area drains to two single outfalls that are, that are just down the street here. And so, everything that we're talking about doing is underground. We're, all of the water is, it's all been piped. So, to figure out where these pollution problems are coming from, you need to look inside the manholes, you need to stick dippers down to collect water samples, and you analyze the water samples. And that's how you start to figure out what's going on. And so, we took this, it's a 550-acre drainage, and we basically broke it up into discrete segments so that we could kind of parse it out and see where the major problems are. Next. These purple lines are the storm drain pipe network. So, they go to the northeast, towards Sligo Creek there. And all the little blue, blue water droplets are where we took our samples. So, at each one of those points, we opened a manhole, grabbed a water sample, and did some tests to figure out how polluted the water might or might not be. Next. The things that we look at that tell us whether the water is polluted or not are these set of criteria. These are the, the water quality indicators that were defined in that 2004 manual that we produced that, that said that these are the best things that you can look at to figure out if water is polluted. Ammonia is a primary wastewater indicator, so that's the primary thing that we use in the field. We also look at fluoride because that tells us whether the water is a potable water source. We look at anionics, surfactants, or detergents, and that will tell us whether the origin is of a wastewater or a washwater origin. Potassium is another wastewater indicator. Then we take a total nitrogen and total phosphorus sample because we're interested in how this relates, again, to overall pollution load. We're really interested in knowing what is the contribution from these sources so that we can take it to people at, at the federal and state level and say, this is really significant, we need to be paying more attention. And then we also look at the E. coli and the total coliforms because they're, you know, they're a wastewater indicator and again, it's also a public health issue. The picture that you see on the bottom, you can't really see the outfalls in that, in that picture, but at these outfalls, there, there's a significant input of SUDs, which is one of the first things that we noticed about it, is that very regularly, there is a large pulse of SUDs that comes from this outfall, which indicates that there's something connected to the system that shouldn't be, and, and that is then going into the stream. So, we had hoped to figure out where that was coming from. Unfortunately, we didn't. Next slide. So, don't be overwhelmed, this is just showing us, like, this is a whole bunch of the data that we would collect. The numbers that you see in bold are ones that exceed our thresholds. And what we're looking for is where we're seeing multiple exceedances of a whole bunch of parameters. So, when, it's a weight of evidence approach. When we're seeing hits for more than one thing, then we, then we can be more certain that there's actually a problem going on. So, Outfall ID KEO1B is actually the main, it's the main outfall down, down the street. That one has, you know, indicators of wastewater and it has a lot of detergents, we're seeing hits for fluoride, high conductivity. So, we're seeing a whole bunch of problems coming from the outfall itself. All of the other samples are the ones that we took from within the drainage network at the manholes. So, I circled two, the two MA3 and MA6. Those are the ones that look to be the most significant problems based on our sampling. This, these, this, especially this MA3, those numbers that you see, they look like numbers that you would see coming from pure wastewater, but yet, this, this is water that's draining to the creek. So, where is that coming from? And the other one, MA6, is very similar, really high detergents. 3 is the highest number that our, our test will read. So, significant problems. Next slide. Next, and next. So, we found that those major problems, that MA3 and that MA6 are right around where we are now. They're at, one is near the Park Ritchie apartment buildings, two buildings down. And the MA6 was coming from the area of the elementary school. There's also a bunch of other smaller hits, we call them exceedances of our water quality thresholds. Those are up in the upper drainage area. We didn't get a chance to check them out. With the funding that you gave us, we primarily looked at, at these two, the two most significant problems that it seemed to us, these ones right around here. Next. We also, we did this pollution load accounting from the Maple Avenue outfalls. We do this for a couple reasons. One, we wanted to get a baseline estimate of what the loading is from the outfalls. That way, when we start to make progress in eliminating these things, we can show with numbers, which is really meaningful to regulators, funders, people about what kind of difference this is making. We also noted some patterns when we were doing this. There's, again, there's two big outfalls and they show kind of different, they have different volumes, they have different pollution loadings. One seems to be, have, it has more phosphorus and it has more nitrogen loading. These are distinct systems, so there's probably more, the problems is, is probably more associated with the outfall on the left than the one on the right. But we, and we also noted that there was a lot of variability in the amount of pollution that's coming out of it, indicating some kind of intermittent problem. Next.
Excuse me, can I just stop you on that slide for a second? When you gave the example before from Salisbury, I think you said that the, the 68 million gallons was carrying 1,500 pounds of nitrogen, is that?
1,900.
1,900. So, this is 2,500 pounds of nitrogen at the bottom?
Yep. Yep. And the concentrations of nitrogen and phosphorus are also shown. There are no criteria that's established by the state for what would be a high nutrient concentration. They are starting to move that way and we are seeing that some of the concentrations that we're seeing from the outfalls are at, at the upper level or above those criteria that they're starting to set. Next. So, again, we, we use the funding that you gave us to focus on those two main problems, one around the Park Ritchie Apartments and one at the elementary school. And we obtained a couple of things from the city to help us. One was that the city had done in 2008, they used closed circuit TV to, they videoed all of the storm drain lines, which is really awesome. So, we use that to try to help us figure out it, help us determine where some of the problems are coming from. And then for this problem at the school, we obtained the as-built drawing so that we could see where some of the pipes were, were going and coming from in that area. Next. So, at the Park Ritchie Apartments, the, the original problem that we found was in, and I can't point to it because I don't have a laser pointer to go around and show you, but it's, it's in the parking lot directly north of, there's a triangle of purple, just under the junction buried under fallen tree. Punch out that you see there. So, that was where we originally detected those really high concentrations that looked like they were sewage water. Again, the, the purple lines are the storm drain and the green lines, those are sanitary lines. And so, when we pulled that sample, there, there's no storm drain line indicated where we pulled the sample. So, one of the things we wondered was, well, are we actually sampling a sanitary line instead of the storm drain line? Because it's, when you open up the manhole, it's really far down, you can't even see the bottom of it. Our 20-foot pole could barely get the water at the bottom of it. So, to determine whether it actually was draining to the stream, we put dye in that manhole and then it came out later, very shortly, it came out later at the outfall and then went to the stream. So, we were, we're sure that at least that pipe is going to the stream. From there, it was hard to figure out, the, the connections don't seem quite right, or the mapping doesn't seem quite right. Based on the video that we looked at, it looked like there was an input of flow coming from the Park Ritchie Apartments area. And when you look at the video, it looks, there are certain indicators of wastewater problems that they leave their trace. The water is gray, there'd be a buildup along the bottom of the pipe of kind of a thick fungousy material. We saw something like that in the video and I wanted to see if we could figure out if it was coming from the Park Ritchie Apartments. A lot of these problems are, they're, they're accidental. People hook up the sanitary lines to the wrong pipes. They, the plumber comes in, hooks up to the storm drain line by accident, he didn't know. And then there you have your problem, it goes on for years and years and years. We got in touch with the Park Ritchie people and we, that's a really big building. We decided we would just put dye into, into where their laundry facilities exit the building and see if that, we could again see that down at the storm drain outfall. We, we didn't get that, we didn't see it. So, there was no connection at least from their laundry facility to the storm drain network. Possible, it's, there's a connection from an individual apartment, but to figure that out, you would have to dye every single apartment in, in the building. However, when we went upstream to a manhole, you see a little call-out that says ammonia 3.34. This is in like a little wetland area behind the Park Ritchie Apartments. It looks like there was a Boy Scout planting or something there. This is a really, really high ammonia concentration, again. So, to figure, you know, we wanted to isolate this. We, we walked in through the woods and went up, and then where you see ammonia 0.65. So, you see that the concentration increases significantly between those two points, which suggests that in between those two points, there's a significant input of some kind of wastewater source. So, that's when we engaged WSSC to come out and help us. You can see that there's a blue sanitary line that crosses the, the storm drain line. One, one thing that we also noted from looking at the city's video is that that storm drain line is very leaky, which is, I mean, that's fine. Storm drains are supposed to leak, they're supposed to drain out water. But we thought that if there's a problem with that sanitary line that crosses the storm drain line, it, it could be leaking into the storm drain. So, we asked WSSC to come out and put a TV into the sanitary line to see if we could determine if the sanitary line was leaking. And they were very agreeable to come out and they came out a couple times. They put their camera in and they ran into some trouble. There was a lot of debris in the sanitary line that they had to clear out. There was a lot of bricks and just a, a lot of material. They, they said it was unusual, they had to use shovels to get it out. Not supposed to see bricks and stuff in the sanitary system, so I'm not sure, you know, seems to me there might have been, you know, some kind of failure or something. And then when we looked at the sanitary line, the field staff indicated that, they, they plugged the upstream sanitary lines to stop the flow that drained it out so that we could see the bottom of the pipe instead of having it half-full of water. And they put their camera in and you could see open joints in the pipe and we could see many, many critters, like big macro vertebrates and centipedes, I don't know what they were. They were crawling in and out of the pipes. It was like, it was like a living microcosm inside. I mean, it was really amazing. And he said that, yes, this is unusual, yes, you can see the water leaking out of the sanitary pipe. However, when, after this went up levels in WSC, SSC, they came back and they told us that, no, their sanitary line is not leaking. However, it had already, the sanitary lines are already scheduled to be repaired. They had been scheduled to be repaired before we even went out there. But they won't tell us when that is. When are they going to make these repairs? They won't tell us. And that's something that I hope that you can figure out. So, the, the other thing is that this water in this wetland, we did test that for E. coli and total coliforms. And our methods are, they're not EPA-approved, so if you want to go out and, you know, you need more significant or more robust documentation, then, then you should potentially do that. But our, our kind of screening factors showed that the bacteria numbers could be very, very high in this wetland. And there is a boardwalk that runs through this area that children use to go to and from school. So, I think that this area should be posted as, you know, polluted water, keep your hands out, you know, whatever signage is appropriate. We don't think you want people interacting with that water. Next slide. The investigation at the elementary school, originally, we ended up at the southwest side of the school in a manhole. There was a lot of flow coming from it. It smelled, it smelled like sewage. It was, it's really confusing because right before we got there, we saw a teacher out on the parking lot with children doing something and she had a hose. And from looking at those plans, we know that there are perforated pipes around the playground. So, I don't know if she had some kind of washing solution that then went into the perforated pipes and into the manhole that we were looking at. Didn't explain why it would smell like sewage. There is also a stormwater vault and one of the city staff suggested that maybe that smell was wafting up. Stuff has a tendency to decay in, in those kinds of systems. However, when we went back again to investigate, we were going to do some dye testing, we thought that there was a problem with the school because of that bad smell and the really high hits we were getting. And it was dry. And ever since I've gone back a couple more times on my investigations, and there's never been any more water coming from that particular area. But we also found, and this is kind of something that we've been seeing in a couple locations in Montgomery County, is these really high ammonia concentrations and total nitrogen coming from commercial HVAC systems. We don't know what this is really about and we have, we're going to be working on a project with Montgomery County to do a, do some research on why we're getting so much nitrogen and ammonia from commercial air conditioners. Air conditioner condensate is supposed to be exempt as an illicit discharge. However, if it's found to be a problem, then it's going, then there's going to be, you know, some, have to be some kind of action or regulation that needs to come into play. It's not so much pollution, it's just, it's the total amount of nitrogen that's coming from it, which leads to cumulatively, again, a lot of load. We're talking about, we, we found issues in Silver Spring at the Majestic Theaters and at the Marriott. And so, all these commercial HVAC systems leaking small amounts of nitrogen, big impact. Next.
Can you just, are they leaking something they're not supposed to leak or it's the design?
That, that's, that's the question. We thought that, that was an antimicrobial product that they were putting into the commercial HVAC systems, which is ammonia-based. That's what we found at the Majestic Theater in Silver Spring. We thought that that was the problem. We asked, I mean, that was at the Marriott, but when we asked the Majestic Theater what they put in their air conditioner, they, they reported only putting something in their cooling towers. And then when we talked to public school system about what was going on at the elementary school, they reported not using anything. So, we're not sure whether it's something in the coolant, something in the, you know, an antimicrobial product. Another theory is that it's atmospheric deposition on the coils of the HVAC system that, but so it's, we're not sure. So, just two more slides. Our recommendations or next steps that we would suggest would be to continue these investigations and this Maple Avenue drainage, continuing to follow up on the things that we did not get a chance to follow up on. Requesting a schedule on sanitary repairs for, from WSSC for the pipes behind Park Ritchie, posting signs about the polluted water around that wetland area. If WSSC makes that repair in the near future, we would recommend going back and monitoring that storm drain again to see if that problem clears up and if that was in fact the problem. And I think it's probably going to take probably a season or two for that stuff to flush out, you know, a lot of rain to, to flush out the pollution there. Periodically checking at the elementary school for issues. Next slide. It could be a good idea to conduct another closed-circuit TV video screening of the entire storm drain network as was already done in 2008. When I mentioned to Montgomery County that I was coming here to talk to you, they said that they are going to be doing this. I don't know what extent their video efforts will be, but they will be in this outfall doing some of the monitoring. This is as a result of the project that we did with them in Sligo Creek. They're, they don't have a sewer camera, so this is something that they need to contract out. It's one of the hang-ups with figuring out where these problems are coming from is that you really need a sewer camera. In the end, that's what it comes down to, is you need a camera to go up the pipe because you just can't access everything. So, the county will be doing some of that and I would encourage the city to be coordinated with them and to make sure you keep abreast of whatever they discover from that. Another option is to send someone that's certified in, in entering these pipe systems into the actual outfalls. They're very big. Again, 72 inches is huge. You can't put a camera in a pipe that, that big. So, if somebody could go in there and actually walk it with flashlights and sampling equipment, then... flashlights and sampling equipment, then you might be able to figure it out at least as far up as you can walk. The map, some of the mapping we found to be inadequate or inaccurately mapped, and it's, figuring out these problems are hard. They're very difficult, and it takes a lot of persistence. And having good stormwater mapping is one of the keys to being able to figure this out. Also, we noticed, not just here, but in all the work that we did around Montgomery County, that there's a tendency to pave over manholes. And I don't know how that gets addressed, but it becomes really problematic when you're trying to figure this out, and then there's supposed to be a manhole there, and then it's not there. There's a new park near that boardwalk area, and they paved over some manholes in that location. And WSSC was having a really hard time as well because they couldn't locate their manholes. Currently, the city has a memorandum of understanding with the county, that the county is going to do the follow-up on these illicit discharge investigations. The county's resources are stretched very thin across this very, you know, you know how big they are. I would suggest having the city think about bringing that back and taking control of that on your own. And the city does something really cool, which is that when, when they do their illicit discharge screen, they've actually done some of the illicit discharge screening. They do water quality testing as a part of that, which is not a requirement of the permit. So you're already going above and beyond in one respect by doing that. However, by delegating the investigations to the county, then you're limiting it. You could take it further by bringing that in-house, either staff or contractually out, to handle some of those investigations on your own, because the county is just, I don't think that they have the resources to delve into it as much as is needed. And then our group is looking at, there's, do you know the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, the pollution diet, that, that all the local governments are having to come up with ways that they're going to meet their end of the pollution diet as regulated by the EPA? And there, and there's a certain number of practices or things that people can do in order to meet their requirements. And our group is looking at currently serving on a panel that would have illicit discharge elimination as a creditable practice for meeting Chesapeake Bay TMDL targets, because we feel that it is so significant, and we really need governments to put resources into that program. So, next slide. That's, that's all I have. Appreciate any questions or comments.
Thanks very much for this. This is very interesting. My first question is, you've given us a number of proposed next steps that we could do. What I want to make sure of is that we have a good understanding of where we are in this process that you've taken us to. Would you say that there are, would, if you had had more money to do what you were doing, were there additional things that you would have done if we came up with additional money? Is there, is it worth circling back around with you all to say, okay, here's some additional money, here's some things that you could continue to pursue that you just couldn't do that would give us better information going forward? Or are we at a phase where it's a number of the recommendations that you've made, you've done kind of a good job of what you set out to do?
Well, I think one thing that would be really helpful would be to coordinate with the county on this next step. When they do this camera work, I don't know that they, even though I've given them the report that says these are the problem areas, I'm not positive that they're going to take that and say, okay, we need to go to this location and do that. So I think it would be helpful as far as figuring out these, some of these particular pollution problems, to be involved in some of that camera investigation work. And, I mean, there's a host of things in the upper network that we were not able to get to also. So that, I mean, as far as the particular investigations, then yes, we had to leave them all hanging. I don't know if the county is going to adequately follow up on them. And I don't know what resources the city is going to put into figuring those out.
And could you characterize the interrelationship of the system so that we have a clear understanding of kind of coordinating with the county on the camera work and those kinds of things? Are we talking about the six-inch outfall pipes are collecting from an area that is mostly in the city but some in the county? Is, you know, kind of, is this, is this system all?
This one is almost entirely in Tacoma Park. There's a small little bit that's in Washington DC, but most of it is, is yours.
Okay, so that the, we're, we're looking at a system that's pretty much us with those two, those two 72-inch outfalls there?
Those two big outfalls, yep.
And that we have other additional outfalls?
You do, yeah.
Farther down the creek, but these are the two big ones. And these are the ones that you were, this is the area that you were looking at?
Yes. These are problematic outfalls.
And, and so we have some, and you may not know the answer to this. Our Public Works Director might know the answer to it. I'm assuming these are probably our biggest outfall pipes, or do we have other equally large outfalls going into the creek?
As far as I know, they're the biggest ones that you have. For the survey, when we walked all the streams in Sligo Creek, we also visited your other ones. And at the time, I didn't know they were yours. I thought they were all Montgomery County's. But I believe that these are the biggest ones.
And I'm assuming that one of these is the system that was worked on when we did work on this building and put the big collector box under the parking lot and everything and said, gee, we've built this big system, and then it kind of pinches down again when it leaves our property and goes to the school and goes on down Maple Avenue. I'm looking at Daryl. That's, that's, that's one of those pipes, right?
We have the continuation of two 72-inch pipes under this building, and they go directly out. So there's no pinch-down between here and, and the outfall. There's two 72-inch pipes that go down Maple Avenue.
Okay. It was, but it was the collector boxes that we built under the parking lot that are providing their function and connecting to those 72s?
Yeah. From, from here, it goes up. You can consider it kind of going up Philadelphia Avenue to the college. So that drainage area.
And there were other pipes coming in here as well, from Maple Avenue toward the district and down Philadelphia? All of those collect here?
Yes. They collect here and go out.
Okay. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, but also for all the work. I do, first of all, give you my overall impression, which is that you've done great work up to this point, and now it sounds like it's just kind of left hanging.
Well, I hope it's not.
And, yeah. But there's no clear path from here to solution. You've identified there is a problem, or there are a couple of problems. Not sure specifically what those problems are yet, but, or what the sources of those problems are, and so it's hard to come up with solutions. On that one map we were showing, the, near the Park Ritchie, the problem, I don't know if WSSC told you, but, you know, several years ago, they had a major failure in their system between those two ammonia sample points.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And I'm sure Ms. Braithwaite remembers that they actually had to bring cranes and the equipment, heavy equipment down into the valley to repair that in that specific area between there.
Really? Because that's where all that brick came from?
Yeah. Makes you wonder, doesn't it? And, and then you were talking about the potential danger to people walking through that wetlands.
Just touching the water, not walking through, but interacting with the water.
Right. Where those kids are.
Yes, yes.
But I know that since you have done your work there, Park Ritchie has closed that path, that access point off.
Oh, because of this?
And I don't know whether it's because of that or for some other reason.
Okay.
And I also know that the community is hopeful that they will reopen that so that the kids can use the path.
I think it's been reopened.
Has it? Oh, great.
If we, it's, it's closed in the, at night, but it's open so the kids can go to school.
Oh, good.
Park Ritchie requested it be lockable, so they're, they're the reason that it has a lock on it. But they open every morning and they close it in the evening. So it's daily opened. I don't know if they continue that practice on the weekend or not.
Well, that answer is a separate question. I thank you for that. And I hope they're not dallying in the water as they go to school. But anyways, I would sure like to see us find some way to continue this effort to where we at least reach a solution for the most serious problems that you did find. My concern is that at this point, it doesn't sound like there's anybody really responsible for taking care of it, or that's committed to taking care of the, the issues you've located. That's all.
Ms. Braithwaite, did you, look, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I, just a couple of things. It was, first and foremost is following up with WSSC for the, for the major pollution thing that they found. I think we're pretty confident that it's relating to the sewer line that's in need of, and is already supposedly on WSSC's list of pipes to be repaired. There's a massive amount of work going on currently with WSSC, water and sewer lines all over the city, so this isn't an isolated situation, but those projects are a little further along. So the city engineers got to work with WSSC to identify, you know, where this is and their cue for design and, and repair. And it's our assumption that the source of that nitrogen particularly will be taken care of, hopefully, when the pipe, when sewer pipe work takes place. And then it'll certainly be incumbent on all of us to test again to make sure it's solved that issue and not. I think the issue with school is something that the county's going to be looking in. I don't think the county's going to be doing any TV inspection here, and if they are, we should probably chat.
She just told me that the other day.
Okay. So we'll follow up with the county on that. We, the city does its own TV inspections or contract here, and in fact, that area's being TV inspected this, currently now and into the spring. It's in our, you know, we do it every three to four years, so it's in the cycle again to, to be TV inspected. So we've got BF Joy doing the TV inspection in this sub-facoon of the area. So we'll, we'll be updating some of the TV, TV footage that we have.
Yeah, I guess my uneasiness comes from saying that, gee, there is a problem there, but no, doesn't seem like there's a lot of focused effort to get the problems resolved. It's just like, yeah, well, WSSC is going to take care of things when they take care of it. And maybe the things they're taking care of will or will not resolve the problem. It's like nobody's really saying, oh, here is a real problem, and now we're going to go after it until we fix that problem.
Well, Lori could probably talk to this more, but I think that's the nature of working on this issue. You don't, you don't see the smoking gun. You don't, I mean, you have, you sleuth and you deduct, and you kind of come up with most reasonable sources, but there's no kind of absolutes in this. And it is a, you know, it's, I think she's identified, you know, pretty likely candidate based on everything that, that she did in the, in the testing that was done and the.
I mean, they're down to a pretty small area, so it's like if it's, if, you know, solution A doesn't solve it, you're still getting the, the problem, then you got to keep, keep going until you get it done.
Right, right.
And the other question I was going to ask, and I wouldn't have asked, but I stayed on the floor for so long. Was sediment anything that you measured in your testing?
No, we don't. We didn't look at sediment. Although there's, there were some significant sediment discharges from, from the outfalls.
Councilmember Schultz?
I'm wondering, I mean, the solution to these, to be, to even, the solution to getting these, some of these problems corrected, to the extent that somebody can think that they've actually found a source, requires cooperation of WSSC, or in some cases, perhaps the county. Do you, I mean, when you're dealing with these, an organization that is as independent as WSSC is, do you ever worry about, not so much a lack of resources, but a lack of will on that? I mean, it's because, just because they are a large utility and that sort of thing?
We, we've tried really hard, I think, to be cooperative with them, and we've met with them on a number of occasions, met with their, some of their senior staff people. We've presented to them on these projects, and we've tried to engage them in specific investigations and problems in Montgomery County, and it has not been fruitful so far. These are, these illicit discharges can be characterized as sanitary sewer overflows, which are addressed under consent decrees. And whether somebody takes that to the next step and says, and, I mean, I think that there eventually could be a discussion about opening up the consent decrees to make sure that they are addressing these as well if they're not going to, you know, work in a cooperative way.
Yeah, that would, that would be my concern, because the, the, the hope, the whole purpose of your research is to not just to do studies and to prove that these problems exist, but to actually get.
To fix them, yes, absolutely.
And I think what I hear from your comments tonight is that whereas in Baltimore, the problem is so huge, and there's just so many point sources, that it's, you know, you could be stamping out those point sources for years and before you'd ever begin to see any change. Whereas in a smaller outfall like we have here relative to Baltimore, you could actually maybe get to the point where you could have done the research, found the problem, get the problem fixed, and be able to show from an empirical point of view that this, this process that you started and, and then completed actually proved itself to be a workable process.
That's exactly was the intent of our, our project. And I, and I think that you're absolutely right, that Tacoma, Tacoma Park is, you have a leg up because of the smaller size and that, you know, we have this, this drainage, 550 acres. Yes, it's big. The pipes are not really sure what they're doing, but it's, it's a manageable area that you could, you could hold this up as a model and say, look, we, we took this to heart, and we got rid of these problems. And, you know, we reached out to the necessary people. We got these things fixed. We're clean.
Because once we've done that, let's say, then we can't, nobody can come back to us and say, oh, this is, this is hopeless. You can never solve these problems, and all that other kind of.
Yeah.
You know, what I'm trying to characterize here.
Right.
We can say, well, that may be so, but we've done it.
Exactly.
It's been done, and, and so let's not talk about that anymore.
Right, right. And it does take a lot of persistence. It's, it's really not easy to figure these things out sometimes.
My, my, my hope would be that there'd be scientists or people at WSSC who have the same intensity of concern and interest from a professional moral point of view that your organization does, that want to say, gosh, this is exciting. You're doing something that we would love to be able to do, but let's, let's, you know, as fellow scientists or whatever you want to characterize, let's work together on this. But maybe, those people exist, but the bureaucrats above them kind of sort of say.
But they, they have all of the technical, they have all the necessary equipment and kind of technical things to figure these things out that people on the clean water end of things need.
Uh-huh.
So it's, it would, it is necessary to have that relationship with them.
Now, I, I know that in, in my part of the city, which is in the Long Branch Stream Valley area, in Ward, Ward 6 over by New Hampshire Avenue, that WSSC has been working for the last year, close to a year, repairing lines from the individual homes into the, into the sanitary sewer. And, you know, they've been doing this, and it's been a little bit disruptive, but they've been very systematic about it in Ward 6, I think also in Ward 2.
That's great.
And I would hope that if it did enough of it, that that would actually make a difference.
Yeah.
But you don't have any baselines for that area, so you don't really know.
I'm not sure exactly where that is. We did do monitoring all along, so we might have covered it in our other work.
You know, Ms. Braithwaite knows all about that effort, so at least WSSC is trying in that area.
Mm-hmm.
How many outfalls in Sligo? in that area. How many outfalls in Sligo Creek, do you actually do an enumeration of the number of all of them?
We sampled 212 outfalls.
212. Did you find any that were actually clean and like just pure stormwater and no, or virtually no?
Yeah, we did find ones where we did not get any hits for our pollution problems.
Okay. I guess that's-
Thankfully.
Yeah, yeah. I just think that you've gone so far in your work, and you're close to getting to a point where you can make an empirical case that this process can produce results, that we really, I'd be excited about the possibility of helping you get that far.
Uh huh, okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your work on this, and particularly for doing a very dirty job that I'm sure is unpleasant and difficult at times.
Fun, actually.
I have a few sort of background questions and some broader thoughts. One is that I just don't really understand sort of the ownership issues. I mean, is it also possible that there are individual homeowner-owned pipes that are a problem?
It's possible, yeah.
Okay. So it's not, WSSC is probably sort of the biggest owner of infrastructure that may be a problem, but schools, individual homes, et cetera, may also be sources. Is that right?
Yes, they can be, yep.
Okay. You mentioned before the pollution diet and the idea of crediting. Is it an option in the Chesapeake Bay that, for example, if we were to meet our goal, our diet goal, and then exceed it, that we could actually receive compensation from other places for those credits, or is that not a possibility?
There is nutrient trading frameworks that are being established. I don't know the particulars. I know that there's trading going on between sectors of urban and ag, but I don't know, like, within urban and urban if there are trading, or. There are, Bill Stack in our office is very familiar with the nutrient trading, and he would probably have some ideas or thoughts.
I mean, if he just had a quick sense of that question, if, you know, if we did go above and beyond whether urban-to-urban trading is an option, essentially something that would be a reward for a community like this that took, you know, more aggressive action than we had to, the bare minimum. A question for Daryl, or maybe other people know it as well. You mentioned in the beginning that we're required to have an ordinance to prevent illicit discharge?
That's right.
Do we have one?
Yeah, it's a general, I don't know if it's in our stormwater code or where it is, but as Lori said, we have an MOU with the county to manage our illicit discharge. That's what our system is currently, and approved by the state and by EPA, and that's why we have a permit. So we have a whole illicit discharge program that primarily rides on the back of, first it was the state, and then we changed it to Montgomery County, because if you think this, Montgomery County is stretched, try having the state do your illicit discharge. And currently, what it's mostly used for is, you know, phone calls in about, I see green stuff bubbling in the creek. That's what they come out and do. And we've had great response from the folks, Steve Martin and others at the county. They take it very seriously. And when we have those calls, we have a sheet that we go through, and then we call them, and it starts a whole chain process where you get an actual ID number associated with that information. So that part of the system works very well, and it provides us the ability to use their resources in a way that we probably wouldn't be practical from our, you know, point-of-view staffing level, expertise level, day-of-the-week kind of things. So we have, that's primarily what our illicit discharge program is currently going out for, you know, what do you call it, sporadic events, where someone notices something weird or smells something weird, and then we have that system in place. We don't currently have a system in place like, this was our kind of first look at what this might look like on a very microscopic level with what the Center for Water Shad Protection did in this particular sub-basin of the system. Just the other thing, you know, as we're trying to figure out kind of what we want to do in the world of stormwater management, and knowing, you know, the whole requirements that are coming down the way, I think the work that the center is doing to try to get the illicit discharge to count in the current regulatory framework is going to be really critical to move it forward, because we have ways in which we have to show that we're doing XYZ. If we want to add DEF, we have to get that into the regulatory framework so that we can, you know, adjust our programs to show, here's how we're doing this, and here's how we're doing that. So don't take it to be a lack of interest, but right now, we know what we've got to do with our WIP, and we've developed a program to address those things that we get credit for and that the state is counting. So, you know, we'll hope to keep, you know, getting involved in this process so we can make sure illicit discharge gets counted. And I think the work that the center has done is going to be critical to make that case.
And if I can just, while you're still up there, if you can just say a sentence or two about making sure that we understand where we are with our permit. We're in MS4 Phase Two. Is it that we have a permit? We've always had a permit? It's a continuing thing? Just say a word or two about how that works.
Yeah, we always have a permit. I mean, we've had a permit for probably since the city decided to take over the system. It was a different regulatory environment back in the late 80s, but we got our permit then, and we've maintained the MS4 permit since that time. There are annual reports that we're required to do. Now there's the whole watershed improvement program that we're required to do. So we're up to date with, you know, the things on the regulatory side of things. There's some recent reports that we need to do. I think we're about to hit another kind of data point for reporting to the state about our activities. As you can imagine, they're focused on the larger counties, so we don't really even get feedback from them on our annual reports, you know, so they kind of have a much broader area that they're working through the counties. And then we do have this very active county group that's working to implement the WIP in Montgomery County that's led by the, you know, county DEP folks, and that we participate with them on that.
And so my last longer comment, and Daryl, feel free to stay up there if you'd like. It would really help me to be able to relate, let's say, at the Maple outfall at the actual very end of the pipe, you know, what is the level of pollution like? And to be crude, you know, how many toilet flushes does it equivalent to? How many laundry loads is it equivalent to? So we could really just get a sense of the scale of the problem. And then, you know, two follow-ups in that. I'd really be interested in, if you looked at the web that you mapped out of where the storm sewers go, where each of those forks sort of join back into the main branch, the 72-inch pipe or whatever, you know, where is most of the loading coming from? If you said, you know, if we said as a community we wanted to cut the amount of pollution in that sub watershed in half, you know, what would be the, which forks would we follow to get to find the half? And then, you know, obviously, your work goes further and further up to get, you know, exactly where it comes from. But if we set a goal like that, I'd really be interested in figuring out, you know, what are the points, and being able to understand that. And, you know, half is obviously, is it nitrogen? Is it E. coli? You know, that's a question more for you all. But to me, I'm also really interested in, you know, if we, if the center were interested, and my colleagues in the city were interested in having, for example, the center apply to NIFWIF for funding to do a, you know, full-scale sub watershed assessment, and then, you know, be able to essentially track to bird dog with WSSC their work, to try to get these things cleaned up over, you know, a three-year period or something. You know, that would be a really, and, you know, the city would need to be involved, because we would have to match these other sources of funding. But that would be a way to continue what Councilmember Schultz and Siemens both mentioned as, you know, sort of the next steps of the work. If we had a plan like that that identified, you know, the forks that most of the pollution was coming off of, I would think that would give us a very powerful advocacy tool to go to WSSC and say, we want you to go here next, you know, or have you gone there, you know, year out, you know, six, every six months, whatever. You know, it would be a real hammer for us to push on them to make improvements. And I just don't, I don't know if the center is interested in something like that, but, and I don't know if my colleagues are, but, you know, that would be a way to make sure this work, you know, continues, and that we would be able to take advantage of the center's expertise in really pinpointing these things, and put it into a program framework where the city, you know, could try to get WSSC to clean it up. And then, back to my original comment, if it's an individual house, you know, figure out how we address that, or a school or whatever, figure out how we address that. So I just wanted to get your reactions to those ideas.
Well, we're certainly still interested in continuing to work with the city. We have, I would not suggest NIFWIF as our source of funding. They have not, they, we've applied for a number of grants ever since that one we got a while back for illicit discharge work, and they're not willing to fund that kind of work. But there are other sources like the Marpat Foundation, which has recently, had funded us in the past, and I think that they might be a good source for us to go in together with the city if the city were interested in doing that kind of process.
Yeah, I think this is the first time that I can recall where the city's ever, other than, you know, like, we've had situations where PFCOS put a, you know, utility pole through a storm pipe, and, you know, eventually, it becomes apparent that there's a problem, and, you know, and sewage starts coming up out of the ground, and we get them to fix it. But this is the first time through an illicit discharge check, you know, there's been contact made to WSSC to say, you have a problem here, and it's creating a problem in our stormwater pipe. So we're in new territory, and, you know, trying to figure it out.
And I know at least two more councilmembers have questions or comments, and I want to get to those. I just want to remind my colleagues that we're, we're over an hour on this topic, so we don't want to keep going all evening. So, not that we don't want to hear the comments or the questions. So Councilmember Daniels, go on.
Thank you, Mayor. This flabbergasted me, this whole, you know, I'm pretty much in shock. It's, these are just really comments, because Councilmember Mayo and Schultz and Siemens have actually asked questions about where to go forward with it. But your comment, major comment, schoolchildren interacting with the water. You said that shouldn't happen, and it sounds like they interact, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, schoolchildren interact with the water if they're pounding through it every day. I mean, it's what they do. They jump in it and splash around in it and put their hands in it, even if they're on their way to school. That is pretty frightening, especially if it's that polluted. I saw those numbers, when it was 1,900-somethings that was-
Pounds of nitrogen.
Pounds of nitrogen, sounded nasty.
The bacteria is more the concern.
Yeah, the bacteria, the E. coli.
Interacting with the water.
Yeah. That was, I'm like, and it's just right down the street. It's a block away. I mean, it's very close. And it just, it is, it's there, and we, you know that it's there because you tested it on that end, but where is it coming from? And that's, that's the problem.
Well, I think it's coming from that sanitary line.
Yeah. I mean, just talking about the, what did you say, the microorganisms or the colony?
Yeah, the microcosm of life living in the sanitary line.
Living in the line. I'm like, wow. I just, they're scary, I think they're pretty scary numbers, and I don't want us to let it drop, because if it's happening in that one little spot, that spot right down the street, it's happening everywhere in the infrastructure, gurgling beneath the surface of our-
I mean, I don't think, it's like a horror story. There's other areas that might be problematic, and that's one of the bigger problem areas, is like between here and there. There's something going on, whether it's just that sanitary pipe or something else.
Yeah. I just want to, I want to see how we can go forward with, see, and then how long does it take to fix it? I'm listening to three years. It doesn't, you don't just flush it out and it goes away. It's not like giving it penicillin. 10 days later, it's over. It takes a long time, because it has to seep back into the earth somehow and-
Well, the rain will flush it.
The rain flushes it, which we haven't had a whole lot of here in the last, in the last couple of years. So, all right. Thank you. This was eye-opening. I mean, really, it was eye-opening.
Yeah.
And I've just got one final comment. I'm intrigued by the, what sounds like the ongoing effort to get illicit discharge work credited in the whole scheme. And I would welcome an opportunity to spend a little time talking with you or whoever might be the right person to talk to, to understand how I might be able to help make that happen, since I'm one of the governor's appointees to the local government advisory committee on the Chesapeake Bay, and have quarterly meetings where I meet with EPA and other folks. And it would be very helpful to have a little, a little something that I can take to those meetings-
That would be great.
And push that agenda forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I will leave my card.
Great. Okay. Sounds like we got some work cut out for us.
We have one thing I just wanted to say, is that the sewer lines to individual homes are actually owned by the WSSC, all the way up to the house proper, even though it goes under private, your private property, that they have the right to go in there and make those repairs, and you don't have, the property owner doesn't have any say, all the way up to the basement wall where it enters the house. So, do you know that?
Doesn't sound right, Kimmy.
It's true.
Because it depends on-
It's not true? I thought that's what WSSC was doing when Walgreens was dropped.
The water main is certainly the responsibility of WSSC. The house connections tend to be seen as the responsibility of the property owner. It was, you know, basically the connection that was made to the WSSC provided service.
Okay, I apologize.
Now, there's some times where a utility will go and replace sections like what Washington Gas just recently did, even though it's, you know, Washington Gas is the one that owns it all the way up to the meter at the house. WSSC, they own the gas, they own the sewer main and the water main, and the connection too, between the main and the house is the private property owners.
I'm sorry.
Yep. But Washington Gas, because of the nature of the danger of gas versus water and sewer, they do own up to the meter at the house.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. You want to take a break? We'll take a short break, and we'll come back for a rest or meeting. We're back. We are now in special session, and the agenda item in special session is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Maryland Department of the Environment on behalf of Walgreens. And who's going to say a few words on this?
I have just a couple of comments to make about this. As noted by the mayor, the council is being asked to approve a resolution which would authorize, with conditions, the submission of an application to the Maryland Department of the Environment on behalf of Walgreens for a number of stormwater improvements at their site. If you recall, it's located at the corner, or the southeast corner of New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard. The project is preliminary at this point in time, estimated to cost $1.66 million, and involve a reduction in the amount of impermeable surface on the lot, the connection of downspouts into an infiltration system, and the introduction of a bioslope for the big, large green space area that's located on the site. The application, if submitted, is generally intended as a letter, or is viewed by the state as a letter of interest, and could be withdrawn by the city at any point in time. The projects that are submitted through this process are ranked by the state. Those that are the most highly ranked are entered into negotiation with the state and the applicant. entered into negotiation with the state and the applicant. In this case, it would be the city and Walgreens as well as the state to work out the details and the financing. And if an agreement is made, then funding is, would be available in July, or July of 2014. Walgreens has committed preliminarily to offsetting or assuming financial responsibility for any costs associated with this. We've also asked them to assume responsibility for any additional information or reports that are required during that negotiation process with the state. And then if the project is awarded funding, that they would assume all responsibility for the many reporting requirements that would be necessitated by this project.
Okay. Somebody want to introduce?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Councilmember Schultz. I'm going to you first.
Okay. Thank you. Do we, Sarah, do we understand what is the motivation for Walgreens wanting to do this? I mean, I, just, it's a really open-ended, innocent question because I, curious.
I'd like to think that it's because the project needs to be done. I'm also aware that because there is grant funding available through this program, that that's a motivation on their part as well.
So, and when you say that it needs to be done, can you elaborate?
The project, if you are up in that area at all, you'll understand that it's basically a huge swath of asphalt with a multitude of different parking areas behind the shopping center, that area. It's in fairly poor condition. There is not a lot of green space or impervious surfaces. I always get those reversed, so...
Impervious.
Impervious surfaces, thank you. And that there are some erosion issues or challenges for what is commonly referred to as the beach. It's that big grassy area and the big grassy knoll behind the easy storage area.
So yours, we're really talking about not what people would say when we say Walgreens, they would think of the drugstore. This is to address the impermeability or the imperviousness of the entire ownership that they have, the ten...
Correct. Walgreens Company owns the Walgreens store that was just constructed in the last two years. But they also own everything from the Walgreens store up to the 7-Eleven, down to Aldi's, across the street and along Holton Lane. So they own the post office, for example, the Booch store, et cetera. It's roughly a 10-acre site.
And they need to do this because they have to comply with stormwater management laws?
I do not believe that is the case, but we can check that.
Yeah. Okay, I was assuming that that was part of their calculation.
It's considered an enhancement to the, to the site.
Do you think it has anything to do with their future development of the site? Because citizens, residents, everyone sort of speculates, what is Walgreens going to do? Are they going to develop the site? And this is a very, I mean, you don't have to answer this question.
Thank you.
Or whether or not, you know, and some people said, well, no, they're never going to develop it. They're just going to sell, sell off the balance of the land and move on.
I would like to be able to answer that question. We do not have enough information. Conversations with Walgreens have been limited in the last couple of years. And frankly, this proposal is fairly new to us.
Yes, I know that it is. Very new. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm just disappointed that with Walgreens' interaction with the city and that, you know, it was a last-minute request for us to sign this application and then it wasn't convenient for them to bother to come to the meeting. I just wondered what, if you have any feel for what their level of commitment is?
I know that they are interested in accessing grant funds through this program. So if the project is awarded funding, that my assumption is that they will proceed with it. If grant funds are not awarded for this project, I cannot speak on their interest in continuing this particular project.
Okay, so the benefit to them is that the grant funds would help to defer the cost to them of doing the work?
Correct.
What's the advantage to us to...
It's a, potentially, it's a great project. It really needs to be done. It would enhance the city's ongoing environmental efforts to improve the environmental conditions in the area, as well as improve the water quality of the Anacostia River and a variety of other things.
I'm glad I moved. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. The project purpose and summary document, item C, says that the project has previously been submitted for funding consideration in FY 2011, SFY 2013. The scope has not changed. It's not selected. Do you know about the previous submission?
It's my understanding that this project was submitted in the past that has not changed. It was ranked and by the time they got down to their number in the queue, if you will, funding had been expended, so it was not approved or was not awarded for funding. And that's not an atypical, that's not atypical in terms of funding for large capital projects like this.
Yeah. So it's remarkable in the sense of worth remarking, as has been brought up before, that they waited for the last minute on this, on a project that they had submitted previously and didn't change. So that's just a remark. What's the status of the road swap that Walgreens was entrusted in?
We have not, for those of you who are not aware of the discussions that have been held with Walgreens roughly two years ago, they had asked that the city swap out some of the land up there to, to them so that they could do more of a land assembly, a land consolidation of that area. If you were to actually look at a plat map, it'll, on the surface, it looks like a huge parcel of property, but the reality is it's many tiny, tiny, tiny pieces of which there is no direct connection behind the lot. That alleyway that, or the roadway that most of us use to kind of circumvent the development in that area is part of it's owned by Walgreens and part of it's owned by the city. So there was an interest on their part to have that, the city dedicate that right-of-way to them so that they could either maintain it or conversely, they would turn it over to us and we would maintain it as a roadway. There was some conflict regarding how wide that roadway would have to be to comply with the Tacoma Crossroad, Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan. And as a result of that, the discussions ended.
Ended. You don't, well, okay.
It's still, it's still on the table, but there hasn't been anything going on.
Then the last thing is just an observation that we, the council has a Tacoma Park Large Community Grant Funding Request from the Crossroads Development Authority for $4,615 to match Crossroads Development Authority funds to plant, put six concrete planters, three of which would be on that corner of which Walgreens owns the entirety. Walgreens, yeah, that's an observation.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you.
What's the timeline for this project? Once they get the funding from the state, how long will it take for them to complete it?
I do not know the answer to that. If you look on the second page, I believe, do we include the construction schedule in, in your application?
No.
Current projects, status according to the application information I have here is that they would start construction in January and it would be a six-month project after that. It's my understanding that funds actually would not be available until Jan, July of 2014, so I would back this up.
All right. And my last question is, what's the total cost?
Again, this is all very preliminary and we haven't had a lot of discussion about it, but the information they've submitted to us would be $1.66 million.
And that's the, what they're requesting in the grant, or is that...
They're requesting $1.5 million and with the commitment of $165,000 roughly from them.
And my understanding is that they, they would only get 50% as the grant.
That's why this, yeah.
So, so I think that what the request is, is for about $800,000 in grant funds that they would match.
Okay, all right.
And that level will depend on whether it's determined to be a distressed community or not, and a variety of other factors.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just make the observation that, I don't remember how long ago it was, but I'll say two years ago, Councilmember Schultz and I met with a number of officials from Walgreens when they were here from Chicago. And it started out as a not-great conversation and it ended up as a very good conversation. And I thought we had established some kind of process where they would stay in closer contact with the city than they obviously have. So it's a disappointment that they are kind of coming in with this at the last minute, but I hope based on some past experience that they are capable of fixing that.
We have to pull this one.
Come, Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, yeah. Following the mayor's comment in that regard, and in an effort to see if we can't reignite these conversations, I've drafted a letter with your help that would be going to the president, operations and community management of Walgreens Company. And I appreciate the amendments and additions that you've made to my draft. I think the whole thing is an excellent letter. And I'd like us to get it signed and out the door as soon as we can so that we can signal to the Walgreens Company that we are open for business here and that they don't need to stop talking to us. And we want, we think we have a lot to talk about. We think we have, in the two, or two years since our last meeting, a lot of things to tell them that have changed in the last 24 months in terms of progress in that part of, you know, the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan area that would be a benefit to them, to the extent that they're not aware of it, which may well be the case. I've recently talked to their attorney, Robert Harris, who represents Walgreens in their Matters and Affairs here in the Washington area. And he's, when I asked him about what was going on, he told me quite candidly that he just hadn't heard from them recently. So I think we need to get that conversation going again. This is a very, as we all know sitting up here, this is a, a big piece of important real estate in the city of Tacoma Park. So I want to thank you for your, for your help with that.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we will go into work session and we have two items. And the first one is discussion of concepts or revisions that's supposed to address the food vendors. And...
Hi.
Welcome. And Ms. Grigsby, I'm assuming you're going to do some introductions.
I am. I'm Roz Grigsby, Community Development Coordinator, and I'm joined by Emily Cohen, who's the Management Assistant. And as you recall, we, you in your wisdom, had set up a pilot program for food trucks at this, on the city-owned property at the Tacoma Junction. And the pilot program expires the end of February. So we're before you tonight to talk about possible directions to go next, changes to consider in the, regarding this aspect of the city code for food trucks. And Emily is going to take it away.
Okay, thanks. So just to reiterate, the council position from, from before was basically to encourage economic development and to nurture small business. And food trucks add vibrancy to the street life in Tacoma Park. So that was one of the reasons why the pilot program was established and next.
And before you do next, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's good to be here. I'm happy to be working with the city. So one of the current challenges is that the city code restricts the ability of food cup, of food trucks to operate in Tacoma Park. In the pilot program, we waived a number of the policies. So if you could just go to the next slide, and the next slide. We waived the permitting fees, and I'm going to get more into that in the presentation. The criminal background check requirement, the 15-minute rule, which requires food trucks or any transient vendor to find a new location after 15 minutes. So this is really designed for ice cream trucks and those sorts of merchants. And then also the hours of operation, which in city code is from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then again, also the food truck program established just one vendor location at Tacoma Junction. Next. So in researching this, the city staff has come up with basically four classifications for the transient vendor code, which is found under chapter 8.12. One would be on city-owned land, the second, private property, special events, and roaming, which is basically what we have now. And so I'm going to go into more of those a little bit more now. Can we go to the next slide? The first is to pre-approve locations on city-owned land. So this would include Tacoma Junction, but it would also include this community center and possibly the recreation center if that should become part of city property in the future, which it's now owned by Montgomery County. Next.
Pardon me. What about city parks?
We've talked about that, but we thought it could open up kind of a can of worms because there's not a lot of good city parks that would be locations for this. You know, would we really want food trucks in Sligo Creek? Something, it's something to consider. And we'd be interested in, in your comments on that. And we thought about Jackie Park as well, or Bell Ziegler. But again, there's some issues with food trucks being in close proximity to residencies, residences, homes. And so we, it's something to consider.
You'll see, with their considerations coming up on how we think we can make this work with the least disruption. And so what we're asking tonight is your feedback on these things, and we'll go from there.
And then the next is on private property. And so this would allow owners to apply for permits in lieu of vendors. And one of the reasons we've come up with this is because there aren't a lot of good locations, there aren't city-owned properties in all of the wards. And so this would allow for private property owners in any ward to have food trucks on their property. And it, we would, you know, one idea, and we could use the same idea for city-owned land as well, is to establish some sort of formula for the density of food trucks. So depending on the number of parking lot, parking spaces that they have, we would allow for a certain amount of food trucks. Okay, next. And then we've looked at the, the fees in Tacoma Park, which is, was one of the concerns that OTBA had and that a number of the food vendors had expressed to them. So these are the proposals that we have for the cost. Currently, the city of Tacoma Park charges $300 for an annual license, $175 for a six-month license, and there is no one-time special event license that's waived. So that would be for events like the Tacoma Park Folk Festival. Okay, if we go to the next slide. And this is actually slightly different than what you have in your packet. This slide shows the cost in other jurisdictions. So we are well, we're going, charging quite a bit more than what other cities are charging. On the first column, Tacoma Park, the blue actually is what Montgomery County charges for vendor fees. And that, this is all exclusive of permitting costs for the health regulations. And that ranges in Montgomery County anywhere from 200 and so... And that ranges in Montgomery County anywhere from 200 and so to 500 and something. So that would be on top of these costs. And actually, we have a $25 application fee as well. Rockville charges $200, Gaithersburg $250, Washington DC is 476, but that's actually a two-year license.
Rockville and Gaithersburg don't incur the county costs also?
That's right. Correct.
And they don't have any licensee or application fees?
I do not believe they do, but I can confirm that for you. Okay, next.
I guess.
Oh, go ahead.
Why, why do we incur the county charge and the other municipalities don't?
We're not really sure, but one of the reasons that we have thought is because we have this criminal background check, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that. And that's really the, the county does not require a criminal background check. And so perhaps the reason that we had that was so that we could have one additional reason to deny a permit, and with that additional cost. Do you want to?
I think also, I mean, the county does the check for zoning and a variety of things, and that's something that Rockville and Gaithersburg have their own controls over. So, so Rockville and Gaithersburg have opted out of the county vendor license law, and they just do their own licensing totally. So we haven't opted out, and in fact, we require that a vendor have a county license before they apply to us for a Tacoma Park license.
So that might even be something we could consider doing.
Good.
So do you think if we got rid of the county license portion, would we get a lot more vendors, a lot more food trucks would come into Tacoma Park?
It might seem that way. I think it's difficult to predict right now. The reality is, a number of the food trucks that have been operating in Montgomery County in the last nine months have closed recently, including Go Fish. You remember, the owner, Melissa, was before you some months ago. So right now, the number of operating trucks, other than worksite canteens, or maybe ice cream trucks, is quite low anyway. So it's hard to predict what would happen.
So Go Fish is no longer in business?
My understanding is they're out of business now.
I would think about going the other way, waiving a Tacoma Park license, except for maybe an application fee, when a vendor already has a Montgomery County license, especially because we're talking about getting rid of the criminal background check as being onerous.
That's an option.
And, you know, Tacoma Park's pretty small, and the county's pretty big.
Why don't you continue and go through some of the recommendations? Because this is just the information as it is.
Okay. And then the next recommendation that we have is, well, just to give you a little bit of background, in the pilot, the pilot stated that OTBA would ask vendors for proof of liability insurance, but could waive that requirement. And so the city staff is recommending that vendors selling on city land carry liability insurance, and that private property owners, if they are the ones applying for the permit, also carry the liability insurance. So just to clarify, a vendor can, either the vendor or the property owner could have the license, if they're selling on private property. But this, the private property approach would enable a rotation of different vendors that might be more difficult if every single vendor had to apply. So that's something I didn't address before. Next. And again, we just touched upon this, was the criminal background check. We're one of the few jurisdictions that requires this. I checked with the police chief, and he also recommended that, that we remove that requirement. Okay, next. And one of the last recommendations that we have is to, to continue the policy that was set forth in the pilot program, which is to require that vendors and property, and we would add and property owners, to appropriately dispose of their trash. The pilot program also discouraged styrofoam and polystyrene products. And staff is recommending that we consider a zero-impact policy for packaging. So that would require something, you know, compostable materials, recyclable materials, and so forth.
Do you have any sense of what the trucks that have been operating in Tacoma Park so far, what portion are complying with that at this moment?
I don't know.
I don't know. We can look into that, though.
Yes, I have a question, is to ask why we would impose this zero-impact policy on vendors when we don't impose it on any other merchants in the city? Because it seems to put the vendors at a distinct disadvantage. If we're going to do it, we should do it for all businesses. But otherwise, I don't understand the point of it, because, I mean, for a business, for a vendor that's going to show up at maximum once a week, and maybe only once or twice a year, I can't imagine what the beneficial, the measurable impact might be. But continue, please.
Okay. Next. One of the issues that came up through the pilot program was the coordination of vendors. OTBA was scheduling vendors at Tacoma Junction, and they were doing all the marketing for the program. And the reason is because this is a program that's really only operating one or two days a week, and it would be a shame if we did all this marketing and promotion, and five food trucks showed up, and there's really only space for two of them. So somebody needs to be coordinating the program so that trucks don't show up, and then don't have space, and then don't come back again. So we want, there needs to be some systematic way to have these food trucks sign up, and so that they are guaranteed a space when they do sign up. And so we've just thought about having an online system for reserving this. It would be a lot simpler than having, it would be a way to manage staff time and keep staff time low. And then next. And then the other consideration is because this is so new, and we waived all these policies in the pilot program, or we waived a lot of the code for the pilot program. If we did revise the code now, staff is recommending that we establish a sunset clause after one year, so we could see how this program goes, or the code, how effective the code is. And then we would review it and modify it as needed after a year. Okay, and then, next. And then we just would like your comments on these recommendations and ideas. Thank you.
I'll just start by saying, I appreciate the recommendations that you're making, and I like them. And the comment that, I think as people are wondering maybe where some of our existing code came from, my recollection is that the council reviewed this area some years ago at the request of the Tacoma-Lanley Commercial Development Authority and their executive director at the time. And there were some issues with some food trucks or other vendors who were setting up, and there were concerns by the Commercial Development Authority about who they were and what they were doing, and how that was impacting the businesses. And so that's why the existing code that we have is the way it is. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. Thank you for this. It's very helpful, and I'll do what you suggest, which is provide comments. I'd rather see a sunset date of two years rather than one, because our agendas go by very quickly. The issue of zero waste, I'm not sure I would set a zero-waste goal, but I might set a, you know, use of recyclable materials goal, and I would, if it had to be narrowed, we could just narrow it to a requirement for vehicles using city property. But I do think that's an issue, and I guess maybe one of the reasons to do it, to impose something like this, some form of a, of a requirement or preference, would be because my understanding is that all established businesses in Montgomery County have to have a waste policy, they have to have recycling, they have to have a plan. I'm assuming food trucks don't have to meet that standard, so they're potentially getting out of waste requirements that the county imposes. With the issue that you started off with in terms of establishing a category for private property, I think there would need to be some sort of limitation on the number of days per year. You know, we're foregoing some, some amount of inventory revenue, or potentially other tax revenue. And I guess I wouldn't want permanent food trucks yet, private property scattered all over the city yet. So maybe just, it's not just a limit on the number of trucks, but maybe the number of days that trucks are present.
Do you imagine that as seasonal, or do you mean no more than one day a week?
Or? I don't know, and I would take your recommendation on that. It's just, looks like Sarah has something to add.
Oh, I was just going to whisper in her ear. As I understand it, and Jesse can probably correct me, two or three of the currently licensed food trucks that are located on private, excuse me, private property are there 24/7, seven days a week. So they are, it's Ethan Allen in New Hampshire Avenue. That is a food truck. It's not particularly mobile, if you were to drive by on a regular basis. So any changes along that line would have an impact on existing vendors.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's just something, I guess, I don't want to cause a, an adverse reaction from established businesses that have a lot of infrastructure costs and in other, in more areas of the city. So it's just something to be thoughtful about, I guess, and it comes to mind for me. A policy question, I believe that in county health regulations, I've been informed of this by some of the food truck operators, that if you bring your own container, much like the mayor's Tappit proclamation a few weeks ago, if you bring your own container in DC, you can have them fill your container at a truck in DC, but if you do that in Montgomery County, they say they can't fill your Tupperware, or your plate, or whatever. That's a very easy way to eliminate waste, to, you know, circumvent this whole issue. What the trucks are using, that might take a change at the county level that we would have to advocate for that's separate from our policy. And just quickly, my last comment would be, and I don't know how this would work, but I love the idea of the city, in the city lot at the junction in particular, having one day, and I wouldn't do it any more than sort of once a year, but having essentially something like a food truck festival, where you close the lot to parking, you invite 10 to 15 trucks, you have music, that was one of the recommendations of the Tacoma Junction Task Force sort of events. So have, you know, piles of food, some form of entertainment, and, and just do that once as, you know, a celebration of international cuisine that comes from the back of a truck, and, you know, move on. I'm sorry. And then one other comment is, the other thing that some of the trucks have a problem with is the generators that they use, whether they're using propane or some other generator. There's a noise issue, and at least in some occasions, because I live so close there, I walk by almost every night, that there's a food truck. And there's some that use, you know, generators, they're generating a large amount of pollution, which is probably already in violation of county emissions issues, but it's just something to point out. Thank you.
If I could just respond, none of our recommendations change the requirement for a Montgomery County Health Department permit for any truck operating in the city. That's the basis that all of this operates. And so the bring-your-own-container idea, if that's required by Montgomery County's Health Department, then that's, you know, certainly beyond the scope of our conversation tonight, but maybe something for a longer-term effort.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Well, I will avail myself of the opportunity also to offer you a number of comments and suggestions. So I have my own little list, but should go quickly. Regarding reservations and coordination, sounds good to have trucks be able to reserve online. I will say that coordination is a worthwhile function, so you don't end up with three cupcake trucks, for instance. And then, understanding when trucks will be there is also useful. As Councilmember Mail observed, OTBA had arranged for musical entertainment at the food truck site when the weather was warmer. So anyway, I would question the need to have any kind of sunset on this at all. The council can revisit this at any time, whether it's a year from now, two years from now. Why not try to create the best plan that we can, and anticipate that it's going to be revised at some point down the line. I agree with Councilmember Mail's comments about zero-impact, as opposed to something that would simply emphasize reusability, if at all possible, recycling, composting, add composting to that. And to address something Councilmember Schultz said, I would advocate applying these kind of rules to any recipient of city funding. Oh, yes, and maybe restricting it to operations that are on city-owned property, as opposed to private property, would be a good thing to do. But I would apply this to any recipient of city funding. That would include the festivals, Fourth of July Parade, and, and so on. And it's a, it's a start to implementing, for instance, the kind of polystyrene band that the Young Activist Club would like to see us implement. Regarding the hours of operation, it does seem that those need to be handled on a site-by-site basis, depending on whether the site is adjacent to residences, or whether it's in an area where there are no residences around. That's operations, as opposed to having the truck located there and shut down. I will say that my office is in Old Tacoma, and I used to patronize Yaron Stamatitski's falafel truck once or twice a week during lunchtime, and I would love to have trucks here during lunchtime. And then lastly, an idea that was suggested to me by a city staff member, and that I passed on to the acting city manager a few months ago, was to have some kind of food concession here in the community center building that would serve visitors to the community center and staff as well. And I would think that that would be covered under this as well. In other words, once again, we're talking about food vendors and not just food trucks. Thank you.
Just a question of clarification, you mean actually a cafeteria within the city building?
No. The staff member who suggested this to me was Phil Shapiro, and he works in the computer area next to the library. And that's an interesting area there that's open. You could, for instance, I'm extrapolating a bit here, you could have a vendor, it could be a local storefront vendor, such as Tacoma Bistro or Capital City Cheesecake, that would bring in pastries, prepared sandwiches, salads, coffee, and other drinks, and so on. In other words, it wouldn't be food that was prepared on-site. It wouldn't necessarily be food, it probably wouldn't be food that was prepared fresh on-site, but it would be sold here, and that would be something that would be desirable to see covered by this. In other words, I'm not saying do it, I'm saying allow it.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Couple questions. One, how are the food trucks impacting the bricks-and-mortar businesses? Or do you know?
I know that OTBA has done some informal polling of the restaurants in the immediate area of the junction and Old Town, and it doesn't seem to have had a negative impact. I'm not sure that it's had, I'm not sure it's had much impact one way or the other. The sole exception, I think, is the co-op. And at the beginning, the co-op reported increased sales on the nights where there were food trucks. That was in the summer, the crowds were, were significant. I think that's tapered off. So I don't know that they're seeing a bump one way or the other now.
And what, how, when you have the food trucks at the junction, and you have the food trucks at Trove, is there any, like, cross-pollination? Do people go to, you know, are there, like, dessert trucks at Trove?
Originally, OTBA was coordinating both of those locations, and I think they tried to have a mix at both places, so you could get dinner and dessert or something at one, as well as the other. That, that, the Trove location has since been taken over by the owner of Trove, and so he's coordinating the trucks on his property now.
Okay.
And OTBA is not. And so they work from the same list, essentially. He, of course, is in DC, so he has a different pool that is available to him, though I haven't seen a lot of that mix into his regular scheduling yet, a little bit.
Have we seen more different vendors coming into Tacoma Park, or is it just the same characters?
I don't have the number of how many different vendors have, have applied their wares in Tacoma Park over the seven months that the pilot program's been going on. Initially, of course, they were all new to us, and there was a pretty wide variety circulating through. Now, the, it seems there are a few regulars. Curly's Barbecue is often there, and I think it's there, it's a smaller number that we see more often now.
And do you, did your department reach out to the Food Truck Association? I understand that's new. And market to them to come to Tacoma Park? They're in DC.
So what the city did was task OTBA with doing So what the city did was task OTBA with doing this as part of the city's agreement with OTBA, and OTBA, and I know even Councilmember Mail was deputized in this effort, reached out to a number of food trucks all over, trying to get contact information and interest and availability in coming to DC, or coming to Tacoma Park. So I think they initially did a huge effort of outreach and information. Then I think, because it was so successful last summer when the weather was still warm, food trucks started calling OTBA, saying, hey, we hear this is happening and we want in on it. Now, a combination of the season and a shift in some of the numbers of food trucks available, I think it's a quieter operation this time of year, anyway.
And my final question is, Emily, when we spoke, I said I wanted to see if we could do food trucks at Washington-Ventis University. I want to know if you had any luck talking to them and what their response was.
I did reach out to the president's office and had tried to schedule a meeting, and it got canceled twice, unfortunately, because the person I was meeting with got sick. But that's basically why we came up with this. Well, one of the reasons why we came up with the idea to have private property owners apply for the vendor license.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's nice to meet you, Emily, and it's nice to see you again, Ms. Grigsby. Thank you so much for your information and the report here. I'm especially excited that the program is going forward, since I'm the first person, I think, who came into the Tacoma Junction Task Force and said, "Food trucks! Let's do food trucks!" And it's happening. Everybody went, "Ew, food trucks." I went, "Ew, they're trendy." Just not maybe here at Tacoma Park just yet, and now they are. I'm assuming that, at this point, the OTBA is not going to be handling this the way they have up until now, or is it before now? That they...
Well, the pilot program ends the end of February.
So they're still handling...
And so we've been in conversations with OTBA about what they are hoping will happen next, what we're thinking. As far as having them coordinate beyond their jurisdiction of the Old Tacoma area, the indication we've received, and we haven't pursued it, is that they're not very interested in doing this citywide. That might be an ongoing conversation, it might be that they would consider it, but that's where it stands now, and that's why we've looked at these other possibilities of setting up an online registration system and looking at private property owners that might.
How many private property owners are that you might be aware of that actually have food trucks on property?
Currently?
Currently.
There are two or three.
There are a couple of gas stations I know that have pupusa trucks.
I think there are three in Tacoma Park.
Yeah, besides these trucks that have kind of...
Well, besides the pilot program.
The pilot program, right, because there's one down at University, Fortin and New Hampshire, and one on Carroll Avenue down at University Boulevard, I think. There's two that I know of, for sure. There's probably another one someplace else. All right. But there's some lip-reading going on over there.
I was just gonna say, there may be some illegal vending going on.
Oh!
But there are three licenses for site-specific vendors. One, two on University, very close to each other, and one at Ethan Allen in New Hampshire.
Ah-ha.
So there are only three licenses out there.
There could be some just kind of popping up. I think the Food Truck Festival's a great idea. Councilmember Mail's thought of that, just a fabulous thought. I would blow it out to be Taste of Tacoma, so that it can not only be food trucks that come in, but also all the other eating establishments, all three of them. I'm kidding. It means to make a joke like that, but, you know, everybody, because if Bethesda can have a taste of, and Wheaton can have a taste of, Tacoma can have a taste of, too.
The University used to do that, and they never would coordinate with us.
Oh, really? Yeah, the festival they have in April, it's Taste of Tacoma, you're right, yes, you're correct. It was, I thought it was having an original idea, and I've seen it in a banner at Washington-Ventis University. Ah, sorry about that. Anyhow, it's a great idea. I think food trucks here, there's a, you know, there's a staff here that needs to go someplace for lunch. Food trucks here on property, a couple, and choose the days, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or every day, I think that's also a pretty decent idea, there's space. You know, I'd food truck the whole city. I think they're, you know, great. And do we know why Go Fish lobster rolls? Do we know why Go Fish went out of business? Is it because, you know, it just isn't very advantageous to be in business in the wintertime if you're a food truck? Or they're just not in business anymore? We don't know the answer to that.
Their website says there's still a lot, they're just closed till February.
They're maybe, yeah, kind of like Ocean City closes down, you know...
I don't know the details.
First of the year till February, and then they open back up again, so. Lobster rolls, I mean, it's important. But thank you, thank you so much. I'm, you know, I'm really excited that this is, you know, it's ballooning out into something really viable for the city. And as I told you, Ms. Grigsby, the other day, I want to see the name Tacoma Park on the weather maps somewhere, and all the different, on the local stations, so, instead of just College Park and places like that. That's another one of my little goals.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I just wanted to explore this, the oddity, it seems, of these food trucks kind of just going out of business, as you said. Maybe that's not the right term, but, I mean, it seems obvious to me, and I'm just guessing, that it's a seasonal kind of enterprise, that it's pretty hard for food trucks to be serving dinner at dinnertime when the sun goes down at 5:30 at night, and it's colder than the dickens out there. You'd have to be selling something pretty darn special to be able to attract a crowd in that sort of circumstance. And I would think that would be part of it, that some of these people just store their truck, like the ice cream vendors do. We don't see ice cream vendors jingling their bells in January. Just a guess. So does it make sense, then, maybe just to do this on a seasonal basis, say nine months a year, or eight months a year, and just, and not be trying to book vendors, say, you know, December, January, February, or something like that, and just, you know, just to say, we're not going to do it. If people at Trove want to do it, fine, but that's a private entity. That's sort of a question.
I, my tendency would be to leave that call to the food vendor, if they think that they can make a go of it, and that they can get people to come out. I mean, they've been operating in, through December, January, now we're into February. There is a train of thought among vendors that they build their brand, and they develop a local community of supporters, and that you get there by regularity, you show up every time. I guess my sense of it would be, if the city wants food trucks, then we can make that available, and the vendors will choose. If it's not economical for them to come, they won't. But we could also make it seasonal, if you think that that's a better approach.
No, I don't want to make it seasonal, I just was exploring with you as to what's going on there, because otherwise, it's hard to figure out why, all of a sudden, people would be just saying, ah, the food truck business doesn't, isn't viable anymore, it just doesn't stand to reason.
In Montgomery County, there's, the number of the kinds of designer food trucks that have brought so much excitement to the Junction has always been fairly small. I think DC has a larger number of them, but in Montgomery County, it's never been lots, it's never been more than, you know, 30 or 40, I think, for the whole county. So the fact that the number is down, it's down from a low starting point, anyway.
The other question I have, is it at all feasible, talking about having food trucks on public land, to be able to allow them at certain locations on public streets? I mean, for example, Holton Lane up in, off of New Hampshire Avenue, carries a fair share of traffic, no doubt, but it's not a through-street in the typical sense, and that sort of thing. Have you guys given any thought to that, whether that makes any sense at all, anywhere in the city?
We have. Do you want to talk about that?
We have. One of the reasons, we came up with a couple of locations and possibilities, if we were going to have food trucks on, in the public right-of-way, but then we came up with, you know, a number of potential problems, being proximity to residents' homes, and...
Or brick-and-mortar.
Or brick-and-mortar businesses. And so that's really why we came up with this hybrid solution for food trucks just being on city-owned land, not in the public right-of-way, and then on private property, but then also continuing the roaming policy as it currently stands, so that there could be some sort of vending activity in the public right-of-way.
We also have been trying to balance the possible ills, so, of course, there's always the chance that a food vendor would not clean up after themselves and would leave a mess behind. If that's in a city park or in the public right-of-way, then it's the city's responsibility. If food trucks tend, they have been operating on Fridays and Saturdays, that means we're into overtime on public work staff to clean up. On private property, it's clearly the private property owner's responsibility, and the vendor's owner, and that arrangement is between them and the city can cite them if they don't clean it up, but we're not drawing on city staff time to go out and clean it up.
So clearly, you've given it some thought, and that's really all I was curious about. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the work you put into this. You know, it wasn't so many years ago that the council was viewing, and the community was viewing, the food trucks and other vendors on the street as being a blight on our community, and times change, and now we're looking at food trucks as being a positive feature that we can bring to our community. I wonder if you've considered other types of vendors besides prepared food, such as, you know, we heard tonight from Marva Harvest for unprepared food, produce, and then other types of vendors, too. T-shirt vendors come to mind. Have you gave that any consideration as you were preparing this?
We've talked a lot about t-shirt vendors. We have considered the broader range of transient merchants, peddlers. The expectation is, and we're still working out the details on this, something like a market, the Marva business model, would probably be viewed and come under this city management in the same, something similar to the way the Crossroads Farmers Market, which is on private property, or the Tacoma Park Farmers Market, which is on the public right-of-way, something more along those lines. As far as other transient merchants that are not food-related, we are not, we're not ready at this time to propose changes to that entire section of the code. For these kinds of reasons, we're modest in our approach, or cautious, because I think the potential for unexpected things to pop up, if we don't do it well, seems very great. I don't hear council saying you want t-shirt vendors popping up on every street corner.
Yeah, we buy and sell gold.
I'm sorry?
We buy and sell gold.
Yeah. So we're trying to be thoughtful and deliberate in how we approach the entire category of transient merchants.
I certainly appreciate that. Now, let's focus in, if we could just go off on a little bit of a tangent. We talked about Marva Harvest, and, you know, I think you heard the testimony they gave this evening, and the request that we try to help them figure out how they can do business. They have a willing private property owner, they have a business model that's ready to go on the air mid-March, and yet to, you know, to buy product, they have to know ahead of time. They can't wait till mid-March to get an answer. I understand that we're going to go to the city attorney and get some reading on that. Can we...
My first conversation with Ray Nausbaum was this morning, asking about this. This was the first time I had heard of Marva, and the city clerk did contact the city attorney today, asking how it fits under city code. We just didn't have an answer in time for tonight.
So we should have an answer by the end of the week, then? Would be fair to guess?
Yeah, let's just leave it at that. Yes, we'll have an answer. Yes.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay. So you have the feedback that you were looking for.
Yes, this was very helpful.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I guess one thing I'd just like to say is that what is here is pretty simple. It has been a bear going through this section of code, so I give them a lot of credit for what they're proposing, and I appreciated the comments. I think it'll be good to work with.
All right, we have one remaining item, which we thought would take longer than the item we just finished with. The item we just finished with took 45 minutes, so.
Wow. And it's...
If I now sit down, will you talk less about it?
If you stand there, we'll talk less than if you come up here and sit.
Or at least you will.
I don't think she's the problem.
I think we have to stand if we...
Yeah, we'll all stand, you sit.
Actually, this shouldn't take very long.
That's what we thought about the last one.
Go.
We are continuing tonight the conversation that we started last week or the week before regarding potential changes to the city's Chapter Six, or Title Six of this ordinance regarding housing. And we pulled out three sections, or three chapters of the code, that we would appreciate some input on from the city council, and these are more policy-related questions, as opposed to specific language revisions. As I've noted in the cover memo, excuse me, as I've noted in the cover memo, and you've probably acknowledged yourself, a lot of the changes that take place in these particular sections are fairly minor in nature, with the exception of the questions I have for you. The first is related to our Rental Housing Licensing and Commercial Occupancy License Code, and if you flip over a couple of pages, it's the very first red-line document. Right now, the ordinance includes language regarding...
There's no red.
I'm sorry.
Strike-through.
The strikeout document that is in your paper. Right now, the code currently allows, or includes, language referencing a commercial occupancy licensing program, which sunset at the end of June 30, 2006. That particular program was never implemented due to a variety of issues, primarily budgeting and staffing capacity. It would have involved the annual licensing of commercial properties in Tacoma Park. It was an annual process, as I noted, with each of the properties being inspected and the exterior of the property being held to the minimum property standard, property maintenance code standards that we have now. It was, unlike the rental housing program, which implies to both the interior and exterior of a structure, in this particular case... Fees were ranged, or that were proposed ranged from two hundred and fifty dollars per commercial structure to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That doesn't make sense. Excuse me. I think I have written it down. Excuse me, seventy-five dollars for small commercial properties, up to two hundred and twenty-five dollars for larger commercial properties. If you turn to page three of the code, again, the property, or the licensing code, on page three, you'll see where the bulk of the language is that applies to this particular license. The fee information is available on page four, and the language, again, has all been struck. The question for the council this evening is whether or not you would like to reestablish that program. Again, recognizing that it has not yet been, while it was on the books, it was never actually implemented, and that there is a fairly extensive staffing and startup cost associated with it. Just looking at the numbers preliminarily, it would involve adding a new code enforcement inspector, buying a vehicle, and doing all of the other equipment requirements that are associated with sending someone out in the field and inspecting the commercial properties in Tacoma Park. So, that is your first policy-related question for the evening.
Do you have a question?
Any, yeah.
You want to take these one at a time, and dispense with them, and, all right? Councilmember Smith.
Sir, have there been a lot of complaints regarding the commercial properties?
Right now, we're dealing with, it varies depending upon the season, frankly. Right now, we are dealing with those on a case-by-case basis, so as complaints come in, we'll send someone out to do the, address that particular issue. Frequently, it's trash and debris, and we will note other code violations, but it's not as an extensive, a sweep, if you will, that you might otherwise get if it was a licensing process.
Okay. And how much revenue would the city generate if we implemented anywhere between, say, the average of the seventy-five to two hundred and twenty-five dollar fee?
It would be a fairly...
An annual basis, right?
It would be an annual basis. It would be fairly nominal, frankly. When I initially went through and did the financial impact for this project when it was first established, or first proposed, the fee structure, in order to remain palatable for the businesses that would have to carry the license, was fairly low. And that was one of the reasons why, from a budgetary standpoint, we didn't have enough money to actually implement the program. If you compare that range of fees for the commercial properties, again, seventy-five to two hundred and twenty-five dollars, right now, the lowest rental housing license fee is a hundred and ten dollars per unit, up to twenty-two thousand. And that's based on the number of units in a particular building, as opposed to the size, which is what was proposed for the commercial licensing program. So, it's just a little bit.
What, what about other municipalities, like Gaithersburg, Rockville? Do they have these, fees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
So, as, what I hear you're saying is that the commercial code is still enforced by us, but it's not done except on a complaint basis.
The Property Maintenance Code is enforced as it applies to the exterior of commercial properties and their premises, and that's done on a case-by-case complaint basis. The licensing component is not.
Mm-hmm. I see what you're saying. Purely taking away the, the fiscal impact, benefit, or cost of, do you, does, does the commercial, does this non, this part of our code, that's not been implemented, does it make, do you see a need for it, for, for what I'm saying, for a systematic annual inspection of commercial properties? I mean, I'm just, just, just asking your pure opinion on it, since you, you, you understand, you see the complaints that come in, and you use your own eyes to see where there may be problems that probably need to be addressed, but since you haven't really gotten a complaint, you're not going to assign a staff person to go out there and knock on the door?
Given the age of the commercial properties in Tacoma Park, there is probably a need for it. Whether or not it is something that cannot be addressed through the enforcement of the Property Maintenance Code is the question. Frankly, it, it ties back to staffing levels and the financial implications of it all, because right now, what is manageable for us is to deal with it on a complaint-by-complaint basis, and some properties are more problematic than others, rather than having to do an annual licensing inspection.
Do we initiate our own complaints, in quotes, where we...
Yes.
Like, like we do with the house, or code, or the external on residences, where staff goes by and says, "Holy cow, look at that house," and says, "Let's go do something about it."
A majority of the inspections that we conduct at commercial properties are generated internally.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Majority are. And, well, the last question I have, or comment, is that I've, ever since I've understood how the county's commercial sign ordinance is enforced, or by the county's Department of Permitting Services, I have had a strong feeling that it would be nice if we could take responsibility for a lot of very irregular commercial signage in this city. I think commercial signs are extremely important to the vitality of the businesses and the vitality of the community. But some, there's some of this stuff that is just beyond the pale, and it really detracts. And I know that's not the subject of our discussion tonight, but if we could do that, I think that would be something that would go a long way to helping the aesthetics of the commercial areas, some of them in the city, because on the one hand, while we're enforcing the external code for commercial properties, when on a complaint or as-needed basis, it looks like we don't have any say in regard to telling people that their signs are in violation of the Montgomery County Sign Code.
We, the Property Maintenance Code does address, to a limited degree, the condition of existing signs. So, if you have an obsolete sign, or a sign where the panel is busted out, and there's no business associated with that particular establishment any longer, that can be considered a violation of the Property Maintenance Code. But regarding the number and the placement and the size of signs, that is outside the parameters of the Maintenance Code.
Thanks.
So, is there a sense of the council, whether we want to kind of establish and figurate the commercial occupancy licensing requirements, or not? I'm not particularly in favor of doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
You have your direction on that one.
That's good, so I can keep all the excised text up. The second question that applies to this particular section of the code is the issue of owner-occupied group homes. The code currently defines an owner-occupied group home as, quote, "A house that is occupied as the principal residence of the owner or a family member of an owner, and by one or more other individuals," unquote. We do not license them. They are, I think originally, when they were established, it was viewed as larger homes with single individuals that may be bringing in roommates to help offset the housing costs. So, you have a big old house, you're there all by yourself, you've got three bedrooms, your kids don't live with you anymore, you, people come in and live with you, and they pay you for the, the rental of that room. What we have observed in the, in the recent years is a large number, or not, a number of properties where the owners are renting out an excessive number of rooms in their structure to individuals, and not necessarily living there, but it, basically creating a rooming house, which on the surface is not problematic, but when we have been able to get access to the interior of the property because of a complaint, and we've asked the property owner to allow us to confirm that it's not a multifamily residential structure, we have found people that are living in rooms with no windows, no secondary egress, no smoke alarms, they're living, the mattresses next to the furnace, you know, a variety of fairly serious life safety issues, living in dangerous conditions due to the overcrowding, again, the lack of egress, and other fire safety issues. Code enforcement staff has asked that the council consider the possibility of licensing owner-occupied group homes purely for the purpose of ensuring that, at least at the point that the inspection is conducted, that those basic life safety standards are met. It would not, as proposed, require, have anything, they would not, the property owner would not have to comply with the rent stabilization ordinance requirements, the landlord-tenant ordinance would not apply to them, because individuals living in owner-occupied group homes, as it's currently defined, are not considered tenants, so they would not be able to go through the COLTA process or anything. It would be purely as a means of gaining access to the interior of the property to ensure, again, at that particular moment in time, that the people that are living in that particular facility are not threatened by the conditions of the, of the house. Ward six is, a number of them have popped up.
Yes.
And, and let me just say that I recall a time in the past when the council spent some time talking about this, and what I recall is that there was a fair amount of opposition to going down that path from members of the community, and that there was some reticence on the part of the council to kind of define relationships among household members leading to distinguishing group homes as something worthy of heightened inspection. And so, the, where we are now, I think, is a result of that discussion, however long ago that was, I'll say it was probably fifteen years ago.
It predates me by a long, I'm, I'm not sure. I know that frankly, conditions or economic situations have changed, just even the last five years, if you think about it, in terms of the need for affordable housing, and even if we do live in a rent-stabilized community, there are a lot of people that, for whatever reason, doubling up, or just renting a room, because frankly, that's all that they need. The other observation we have made, and this has occurred less frequently in recent years, are people that have decided that they would prefer not to be regulated under the rent stabilization ordinance, so they will pull all of their cooking appliances from the structure and declare it an owner-occupied group home. And because there are no individual cooking facilities for the individual apartments, technically, it does qualify as an owner-occupied group home. So, there are a variety of reasons why perhaps this may be an appropriate way of gauging that.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. If you don't define the people that live in these homes as tenants, what do you consider, though?
Roomers.
Roomers. And if there's a complaint, do they file it with COLTA, how?
It's a civil matter.
It's a civil matter.
Yeah.
Interesting.
The ordinance specifically does not, I went back through it with Linda Walker again this morning, and it's not, it specifically eliminates occupants of owner-occupied group homes from the definition of tenant.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, my recollection is, it was a conscious decision. Councilmember Schultz.
I'm aware of what you're talking about in Ward Six, and that police discovered a rather extraordinary circumstance recent, the last few weeks, one of the streets in Ward Six. As it was described to me, the house, a large house, apparently, each of the rooms in the house had been converted into a boarding room, but there were padlocks on those doors, so that the individual occupants could secure their own belongings when they weren't home, that people were living in all kinds of dark spaces, and paying rent, that there were people even living in the shed in the backyard, if I heard it correctly.
Mm-hmm.
It was, and all, all the characteristics that you just described of, of a lack of safety, and that this, that the existence of this was totally unknown to anybody in the city, including myself. And somehow or another, the Tacoma Park Police Department got wind of the situation and had reason to enter the premises. Is that correct so far?
We've been aware of the conditions at that particular property, not the extent of the individuals that were living there.
Right.
I can't recall what the circumstances were, that the police were able to gain access to the interior of the, of the building, but the Property Maintenance Code, or the code officials, the city, are limited to the exterior of a property.
Right.
And we had reported that particular property to the county's permitting office, because we felt that there were people living in uninhabitable structures, and that from a zoning perspective, they were operating, it was overcrowded, or they were operating a rooming house, which is in violation of the zoning ordinance. And that was frankly, the only way that we could get anybody in. Something else happened that I don't recall, off the top of my head, that allowed the police to get access to the inside.
And that this may not, and this is not, this case is just one of several that the city's aware of in Ward Six. But that this proposal, if we were to adopt it, would, would give the city the opportunity, it'd be an enforcement mechanism that you currently don't have.
It would allow us to gain access to the interior of owner-occupied group homes purely for the purpose of inspecting for life safety conditions. Frankly, this is, would probably not be a very popular program if you were to have vet this out there in the community at large. At least, that's my initial thought. But from staff's perspective, it's an important issue to consider.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess, we can all easily picture the, the scenario that you painted with the beginning of your remarks, where a, a, a large house, children have moved away, it's a lot of bedrooms, the person who lives, who owns the house would appreciate having a little extra income, says, "Gee, I can rent out a couple of my bedrooms to some university students, or some other elderly individuals, who would be nice and peaceful, and everything would be perfectly normal and, and safe." In the old days, you just called them boarding houses, or that sort of thing, or rooming houses, and nobody made a big deal out of it, except that because of changing economy, demographics, we're getting some extreme cases where some, some property owners, probably just a very few, in the, out of the total, are just really putting some people's lives at risk.
Right. Frankly, I don't think it's, yes, it's exactly the scenario that you're talking about, though, where these conditions that I've been describing are undoubtedly for just a small percentage of the, of the structures that this would apply to, but it is an issue.
I think that's a good idea.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. I'm supportive of you moving forward in this area, the, just the one comment, and I expect you'd be sensitive to this, but just making sure we don't incentivize people, you know, trying to go, trying to get out of the current system where they, where you have closer regulation of their property, non-owner-occupied rental units, that sort of thing. But I'm sure you're thinking about that, so...
We're thinking about different definitions, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still, I'm trying to understand the, the way this would work. You say it would give you access to the interior of owner-occupied group homes. Do... Do owner-occupied group homes now register with the city that they are owner-occupied?
No.
How would you identify a place as being owner-occupied group home?
Initially, it would be by word of mouth or observations. We would advertise and let people know that this would be a licensing.
You would put in a public announcement that, that an owner-occupied group home would have to register with the city, and if they didn't register with the city?
Then as complaints came up, we either regarding the condition of the property or occasionally we will have occupants approach landlord/tenant, or meet with landlord/tenant staff regarding concerns about being locked out of their room or not getting their security deposit back and things like that, and then that kind of flags it as far as, okay, this is an owner-occupied group home. It would be a very slow and methodical process, and like many new programs, it is unlikely they would get 100% compliance for a number of years.
And I didn't notice how many, how many rumors would there have to be to be considered a group home?
Right now, we are not looking at limiting the number of people, but looking at ownership, the way it, and the way that this property is designed. So it would be occupied by the owner of the property, it'd have to be an individual or a member of their family that could be documented, and that it would be individual sleeping rooms with a shared common area and a single cooking facility, rather than...
So like a single-family house?
Right.
And mom lives there, she owns the house, and then her son lives in the bedroom?
It wouldn't have to be a family member. I mean, it could be you owning a house, you have a, you have a four-bedroom house, you own it, you're not using the four bedrooms, using, not using three of the bedrooms, and you rent it out to individuals, it could be students, it could be, it could be anybody to live in that bedroom and use your kitchen and watch TV with you or whatever.
So it could be my, it could be my son living in the bedroom?
Then it wouldn't, I mean, if your house is filled with your individual family members, then no, it wouldn't be an owner-occupied group home. We could establish a minimum, if that's what you're...
I'm just curious, what makes, what's the definition?
A group home does not include family members. It's people who pay to live in the house.
But I charge my son rent.
Well, family members.
I need to do that with my kid, man, that's a good idea.
Okay.
And that gets at the, I think that gets at the crux of what the Council faced 15 years ago, was kind of getting into defining relationships of people in a house with the owner, and that's where the Council got uncomfortable, and that's where the Council didn't go there.
I think when the discussion was before, there were different county definitions of family and some other things that made it more problematic some time ago. So I think part of it was the way families were defined quite a long time ago.
Because the city went through an effort to define family more broadly.
Yeah, there was, there was quite a lot of different discussion and definitions and that kind of thing, so I think, I think it's...
Are you saying that you're running a owner-occupied group home? Or no, actually, you're the tenant, and Jeff owns the home?
No, I'm not saying any of that.
I'm just curious.
If the Council is interested in at least exploring this option, we can bring back some specific language. I haven't done that at this point because I wasn't quite sure and I, what sort of feedback we might get regarding this proposal.
How would you define an occupant?
Excuse me?
How would you define an occupant in one of these group homes?
I don't know, I would have to look in my code and find out, I don't know that one off the top of my head, but, I mean, we can explore those things.
I guess my inclination would be that we have enough other things on our plate, and this doesn't seem like it's very clear.
So I guess it would be helpful, my sense is that we're potentially all over the place on this one. Show of hands of people who are interested in...
You're pursuing it?
In, in, in having staff do further work on this.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I see five hands and probably two of us who are not. A majority of the Council wants you to continue to work on this.
We will work with the city attorney to just get a definition of what a group home is, and then go from there, if that work, if you're comfortable with that. Thank you. Moving on to the Property Maintenance Code, which is right after the Licensing Code, this is fairly straightforward. Essentially, the code adopts virtually verbatim the county's Property Maintenance Code with a couple of exceptions which are highlighted on page two. That's the designation of unfit dwellings, the repair, removal, condemned buildings, and the violations section. We will be coming back to those particular sections in later conversation because they are addressed by other sections of Chapter Six of the City Code. The first is unsafe buildings, which will be considered on February 25th. This violations and enforcement will be discussed by the Council on March 4th. Those are tentative dates right now. So the only question I have regarding this particular section of the ordinance is regarding the parking of vehicles on surface parking areas. If you turn to page three of the Property Maintenance Code, it limits parking of vehicles to, quote, "surface parking areas, driveways, and designated parking structures such as garages and carports." People are not allowed to park on the grass, the sidewalk, in the yard. Property owners have, in response to citations from the code enforcement staff, created parking areas, surface parking areas in their yards. Frequently, they just put down gravel, oftentimes it's in the front yard. The question is, does the Council wish to take, have us explore, to the extent possible, given the current zoning ordinances that are in place, whether or not we can limit parking, the establishment of new parking areas to the side or rear yards of a property, or limit the size of any newly created parking area that would be placed in the front yard?
Councilmember Grubbs.
Oh, right, well, you just pressed what I was going to say. Yeah, I have a hard time believing we would be allowed to do this kind of restriction by the zoning code unless it was in other circumstance like the historic district, but certainly, yeah, I'd be in favor if you're looking into it.
It would primarily, undoubtedly, it would, from what we can tell at this point, it would be basically a percentage, like a lot coverage percentage.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, this problem is prevalent in Ward six. Situ, and it's not that often, but the sort of situation that when somebody parks a car on their lawn, just sort of jumps the curb and leaves it there for days and days and works on it, it really is a sore thumb. I mean, it just gets everybody in the community, in the neighborhood, really irritated, because it's such a blatant thing. Like a sort of disregard of what most people would just sort of naturally think, oh, I wouldn't do that, but some people do. And also the area, the idea of just sort of, for whatever reason, people seem, some people have lots of vehicles, and right now, if they just want to basically tell me if I'm wrong, to find a way to park their vehicles on their property per se, to get them off the street for whatever reason, concrete, they can concrete the whole front yard, I guess, or gravel the whole front yard, or do, to do that with some degree of impunity. Am I, am I correct? Right now, we just don't really have a way of sort of saying, no, that's getting, that's too much.
Assuming that there are no trees on the property, which would kick in the city arborist and the tree protection ordinance, and that it's less than 5,000 square feet, which would impact with the stormwater management, yes, they can do that.
And if people want to see a good example of that, take a look at properties on the right side as you come across Route 410 from Silver Spring between Fenton and Chicago.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to restrict it. Other thoughts?
Okay, we will explore that and bring...
People are, I just want to say, people in favor of doing additional work to restrict it. Looks like people want to do that.
Okay, and last but not least, moving to the sale of rental facilities, which is the following section. This is a section of the ordinance that requires a purchase, or a seller, to include a number of documents, providing the seller with the information about the property and the city's landlord/tenant codes. It requires the, a statement regarding whether or not the particular rental property is subject to the city's rent stabilization ordinance, conveying information about landlord/tenant, opportunity to purchase, et cetera, and allowing, and requiring the incorporation into the sale documents, recent rent stabilization reports and inspection reports. When this ordinance was last reviewed, there were concerns or questions regarding the city's code enforcement staff as to the frequency of inspections that were being done for rental properties, and as a result, language, as I was told, had been told, was included in the ordinance to allow a purchaser to request a point-of-sale inspection by the city staff if there were no inspection reports available on file. In the last five to seven years, there have been no requests for a point-of-sale inspection, and as a result of our ongoing agreement with Montgomery County for rental housing inspections, it is rare that there would not be an inspection report for a rental facility that is older than two years. It just depends on the cycling of the licensing thing. As such, staff is recommending that this particular option be removed from the code and that just the rental housing licensing inspection be provided, and that, and that the purchaser be required to, excuse me, I get them backwards, that the seller be required to provide the purchaser with access to the facility to conduct their own pre-purchase inspection, which on the surface would be more comprehensive than any inspection that we would conduct because we would be focusing on the Property Maintenance Code, which is the bare bones as far as whether or not the condition of the property.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. So for these different types of requirements, isn't it, is it possible that the city can just go to the regional sales contract used by G-Car and P-Car, and whenever a residential agent pulls up a deal for this area, these points are already in there? Is that, is that possible?
We have tried working, I'm not sure about the letters that you're referencing, but we, when this was originally established, we tried working with the Board of Realtors for the area to see if we could get this included in the documents, and they did not wish to do that at that time in terms of making it a uniform thing. We had also offered to conduct classes informing Realtors of the, this requirement, along with the rent stabilization and the licensing requirements, et cetera, and, and there was no interest in that, or interest in doing continuing credits and things like that.
Did you try the Professional Development Institute in Wheaton?
I don't believe so, but we can check.
Okay.
If you could send me contact information, I'd be down to do that. That would be so much easier.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand what you said about the change, but I don't understand what the benefit is. You're saying that nobody does it, nobody's, you know, requested this inspection? What's the need to change?
It's a service that we don't provide right now because there hasn't been a request, and based on current programming and inspection procedures, the information is generally, is already in, available in the file. What I would like to, or what I'm proposing is that we just eliminate it entirely from the text of the code as being an option for a purchaser.
Okay, because there's essentially no change? The information's already available?
The information's already available.
Nobody asked for it anyways?
The inspection that we would conduct would be, again, minimal inspection, and from my personal perspective, would not provide any additional insight to the condition of the property than what they would get from their own pre-purchase inspection. Our sense is that most people that are buying multifamily homes are having someone go through and do a very comprehensive inspection of the structure so that they understand the systems, et cetera.
And then I know that G-Car does have the, you know, the Tacoma Park...
It isn't.
...lease item in there, yeah.
What about for purchases? Does it mention that it's rent stabilization?
I'm not sure, but we should check that, yeah.
Let's chat, because that would be great.
If I hadn't had just logged up, we could do that.
We'll let you chat during the day later.
Just to check, though, for tonight, you just want to be able to take out the point-of-sale inspections from the text.
Correct.
Is everybody in agreement with that recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're done.